All right, I'm calling this meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda under information, construction notice appendix F, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The construction notice tonight, you've seen before, we take, we bring this to you in accordance with the general statutes about once a year as we prepare for our summer projects. So the construction notice tonight is for the school locations listed below, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about them.
Yes, sir. Do you have budgets associated with those schools?
I do have, these were all approved in the capital budget. Some of these are bond projects, some of these are included in our capital or funded through the lottery. I don't have the budgets with me, but I'll be glad to provide those to you.
Well, no, I think the main thing is you're giving notice of something that's going to happen, but nothing happens till you bring it back before this board for approval, is that right?
Well, some of these projects are small in nature. I could go through and tell you each, each one just generally, you know, Roland Greys Middle School, these are the renovations that are included in the 2014 bond referendum. The International School at Gregory is a roof replacement project. Howe pre-K, we're doing some HVAC equipment replacement, rooftop units, and window replacement. Murrayville, we're adding two mobile units, and at Parsley, we're adding two mobile units. Sunset Park Elementary School, there's an exterior door entry repair that's being done. At J.C. Rose Center, we're adding two mobile units. Myrtle Grove Middle School, that's the renovations that are included in the 2014 bond program. Ashley High School, there's a chiller replacement project and a roof coating that's being applied. At Haggard, we'll be replacing the brick veneer on the, on the gym, on the old gym, not the new gym. And at New Hanover High School, we're doing a roof replacement project on Brogdon Hall, section, or the back section of Brogdon Hall. And the testing and accounting, accountability building, we're doing some HVAC replacement, again, those are rooftop units, some roof repair work and window replacement. These are all, again, projects that were included either in the 2014 bond or in our local capital budget.
Yeah, you've seen them both, you've approved the amounts and the construction. This is just a legal notice that we're going to start tearing up stuff.
Well, I appreciate that. I just, when, when we give notice of these areas and what we're going to do, I think we owe it to the public to do what he just did and given up, give a general description. So thank you for that.
Sure.
All right. Next item on the agenda is high school signature programs. We've had a lot of discussion about that, and Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. New Hanover County Schools is extremely proud of the choice academic programs that we make available to our students. So we have prepared a presentation for the public tonight to overview those programs and to provide the board with an update. And so first, we'll have Ashley High School, followed by Haggard High School, followed then by Laney, and then to kind of bring up the rear, New Hanover High School. So we have those principals and those lead teachers here with us as well. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Markley. I'd like to thank you for having us tonight. It's, it's a pleasure to be here and to talk about our program. If you were not aware, this past year, the person who started our program, Sandy Soselsky, retired, and I've been able to replace her with someone who was very capable, Ms. Lauren Thompson. With her retirement, with Ms. Soselsky's retirement, we took the opportunity to review our program and look at some changes that we could make with the intent of expanding the program and encouraging enrollment. So as part of this effort, we're trying, we are moving to a cohort model in this coming year. So we are encouraging and allowing ninth grade students, 10th grade students, 11th and 12th grade students to apply. The intent is to create a cohort where we take ninth graders and move them for, through a four-year program. With that, we will have a course sequence that we provide to them that is STEM-based and with a concentration in marine science. And then we will be adding extension activities for the, for the entire cohort in the program to access. Those extension activities would look like field trips, immersion in marine science, and different activities that would just get them invigorated and really involved in marine science and STEM activities that ultimately would lead to the upper level, the upper level courses that they take as juniors and seniors. So I would like to now turn over the program to Ms. Thompson so that she can let you know her vision and what she is doing with the program currently.
So, as stated, we're going to move towards that cohort model, having ninth and 10th grade students completing their prescribed coursework, so taking their normal science courses of earth and environmental science and biology, but in this case, those students will be grouped with students also interested in marine science, and they'll be able to apply that curriculum to opportunities in marine science. For example, in earth and environmental, we can go out and do water quality testing in the area, which would relate back to the land use in their watershed and its impact on the water. In biology, we can look at macroinvertebrates and how their life cycles tell us about the characteristics of those. I'll be able to work with the teachers in the school, in those classrooms, to provide these extension activities and to further the inquiry-based learning in the classes. I've met with parents of ninth gr, rising ninth graders and 10th graders, and they're really excited about this opportunity for their students, and I'm continuing to work with them in getting out those opportunities to them. The program begins in the summer, the week before school. My students are usually a little bit bummed that they have to go back to school a week early, but at the end of the week, they have spent time at UNCW's Center for Marine Science, working with scientists, performing research, presenting on their research, and even working with the RV Cape Fear, so going out on their first research cruise. They're not bummed about going back to school a week early anymore. It's a really great opportunity for me and for the students in that we have the opportunity to bond and to create this kind of classroom atmosphere that has a very high level of rigor, and also it has a good community sense. The Marine Science Academy students in the 11th and 12th grade will be with me for the entire school year. In the fall, they take Oceanography 150, and in the spring, they take Biology of the Sea. Both of these courses are vetted by UNCW, and they follow UNCW-related curriculum. In Oceanography, we attend two labs at UNCW that are part of the oceanographic courses at UNCW, and we do the same thing with the Marine Biology Department in the spring. So they attend the same lab, they work with the TA, they perform the same pre-lab, lab curriculum and content and post-lab analysis. It's a great experience for my students because they face a challenge that they're not used to. In addition, they also go on research cruises with both UNCW and Cape Fear Community College, both offshore at Wrightsville, as well as up and down the Cape Fear River. From these opportunities, they collect data, and they also analyze that data and write a full research paper from that. It's very impressive what they are able to do. In the picture on the right that you see, that is my students preparing a trawl to go offshore, and then what you can't see is one of my students who is driving the winch on that boat. So he's getting hands-on experience with marine technology and a career opportunity that he's exposed to with Cape Fear Community College. As I said, our curriculum is vetted by UNCW, and it follows the same course sequence as introductory marine science coursework at UNCW. The students do participate in student-driven research. Today, they were collecting samples for their marine botany experience that they have designed themselves and established the question, the procedure, and their analysis that they will follow through with. In addition, they also participate in year-long internships. So the students participate in internships with both UNCW and Cape Fear Community College in addition to other stakeholders in the marine science field. For example, they can go out with a sea captain who is actively part of the seafood industry and experience what that lifestyle is like. These internships are great experiences for them because not only do they understand what the careers are like, but it also exposes them to the different opportunities that they have there. So not just the hardcore research-based opportunities, but as well as those marine technology opportunities as well. The students do receive a mentor through this internship, which is great because then they can use their real-world research that they're performing under a faculty advisor to complete their senior project. Through the opportunities of the oceanography and the biology of the sea, they earn up to six prerequisite courses at UNCW or other universities as applied. All they need to do is prevent, present the course description to those universities, and they will often award them course credit for them. Students do participate in hands-on learning every day. As you can see, the, from those pictures, the girl in the middle is holding a juvenile squid. On the right-hand side, they are separating organisms that were just caught in the trawl, and now you can finally see my student who is operating the winch that is driving that trawl in that picture. Students participating in the program will participate in marine science or STEM-related clubs. One of the students is currently the president of the Ecology Club. A few weekends ago, we participated in the National Ocean Science Bowl, where five students competed about, against other students in the state. Several students are also part of Science Olympiad as well as the Science Fair. Students throughout the program will participate in science and STEM-based activities through those marine-related enrichments. They will participate in the Summer Immersion Program, internship, and receive those college coursework. Students participating in the program maintain a high academic standing, and they are also recognized for their participation in the program at graduation. Through this program, it is a partnership through, between New Hanover County and UNCW and Cape Fear Community College. Partnering with those universities gives us access to not only their scientists and professors, but also their resources as well, like their research cruises, their side-scan sonar, and other advanced marine technology. We also partner with the North Carolina Coastal Federation to participate in restoration activities that are occurring in the county and the North Carolina Aquarium as well.
How many, how many students do you plan to have in a cohort?
We would like to, in each cohort, have a minimum of 25, so that they would-
So you'd have roughly 100 total students in the program?
That is our goal, yes.
Okay, all right, because that's one of the things we have talked about, is expanding all these signature programs that only have a few students in them to make them more.
We absolutely recognize that as an issue that we had to address, yes.
How many years has this program been going on?
This is the fifth year.
I've been really encouraged to see the applications roll in this year, and I think for the Marine Science Academy, the 11th and 12th grade program, I think we'll hit that goal, and definitely with our rising ninth grade cohort for next year, which would move on to the 10th grade year and eventually the 11th and 12th grade year, which would be great.
Wonderful.
What is the cost, I think I know the answer, but what is the cost to the student of the UNCW-related courses?
At this point, zero.
That's what I thought you were going to say. So what the citizen should hear is a tremendous benefit to get that exposure, have course-level credit, position themselves as they graduate from high school to just slide right into a program at UNCW or somewhere else. Is that right?
Absolutely, that is a benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all.
Chairman Higgins, Vice Chair Nichols, board members, Dr. Markley, thank you for having us here tonight. We're very excited and proud of the IB program and where it's come in the short four years that we've had it established. The students that you recognize tonight are all part of our 10th grade cohort that are, I think there are 90 students in that particular cohort this year. We're very proud of what they've been doing. We're also very proud of the staff members that we have. We've had, almost a quarter of our staff have been trained by IB, and they teach not only IB classes, but they teach other classes outside of that too, so they'll teach the regular classes or elective, so they're not just teaching IB as they go along. We started 2014 with our first cohort, we started with 38 students, and 34 of those students are on track to graduate this year. Any type of program of four years, you're going to have a little bit of attrition, but those 34 students will be our first to graduate. We're very proud of them, very excited, and if I'm not mistaken, not only will they graduate with a Haggard diploma, but they will also graduate with the International Baccalaureate diploma. So these kids have worked very hard, and we can't ask for a better group of students. But any program, as you know, is only as good as the people you have in it, and we have one of the best there is with Ms. Hall. She is the cornerstone of the IB program at Haggard, and this time, I'm going to turn this over to her.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come talk about the accomplishments. Like Dr. Sullivan said, it's been a really busy four years for the program. We'll talk about the numbers, but in case you're not familiar with the program, the International Baccalaureate is an organization that offers four types of programming, the primary years program, middle years program, the diploma program, and also a career program. There are only, I want to say, about three career programs in North Carolina, the first of which was, and is still at Jacksonville High School. So this gives you, the slide just gives you an idea of the extent to which IB is functioning across, across the world. So we work with the eighth graders coming in. We do have an application process for current eighth graders, which we just completed, and this year, we, we reined in the numbers a bit, and we accepted about 87 students on our first go-round, and we have a short waitlist. The students who were accepted are expected to reply by the end of the day this Friday. And we did that so that we could really better predict how to track the students as they went across the four years. And we're always also trying to work with the open choice system to make sure it's really the best choice for the student and that in the end, they're not uprooted midway through that process. So in eighth grade, we talked to the students, they're expected, required with their parents to come to an informational session, and that, along with an essay that we introduced this year, which was new, those two components are required, criteria for them to be able to apply for the ninth grade pre-IB cohort. I'll refer to it as pre-DP, but I just mean pre-IB, that's all that means. And then in ninth grade and 10th grade, we have them take certain coursework, but we don't dominate their schedules in both of those years. We have to do something to prepare the student, though, for the rigors of the program, because the workload is very intense, and so we start pushing them gently in ninth, and then we have them complete an continue, sorry, an intent-to-continue form to move on to the 10th grade leg. We don't assume that students want to do that. They hear from other students, they think about it, they make their own decision whether or not that's a good idea, and we also give them input as to whether or not we feel like they need to continue on the pathway. Same thing in 10th grade, that's when they would, right now actually, this week, we closed the application at the end of last week, and now we're going through those 10th grade applications for the program, which is, the DP is only in 11th and 10th grade program. So the numbers for this year, as Dr. Sullivan said, our first cohort, there are 34 of the 38 original remaining, and all students are on track to earn the diploma. I won't go into all that is required. A Phase II meeting would explain all of that. That is a meeting that the 10th graders have to attend with their parents before being eligible to apply. Our junior cohort, right now, there are 43 students, and the non-diploma program students taking IB courses at Haggard right now are at 52, and that's a combination of juniors and seniors. So as long as students are academically eligible to take an IB course and they commit to being treated as an IB student in those courses, they're allowed to take them as well and be eligible for the potential of college credit in those courses. In the sophomore pre-DP class, there are 70, and right now, through the application process, we had 47 applicants, and I think we'll settle somewhere between 40 and 45 for the rising 11th grade cohort. And then the freshman pre-DP right now sits at 120, and we had 138 eighth grade applicants this year. Accolades, things that have come out of this current senior cohort, we have national merit finalists, we have Morehead, Kane, and Belk finalists, a variety of full four-year renewable scholarship offers, both in-state and nationwide, many early admits to competitive first-choice schools, and also many pending admissions. This is a big week, really the month of March is a big month, many of them still waiting on their first pick schools through regular decision as well. And I'm, I'm really proud of the students, but really, none of this would have been possible without the teaching faculty. It's very work-intensive for the teachers to teach these courses, and they're held to a standard, both at the school and by the community, but also by IB, and that's a quality control that's built in. And I know it, the school knows it, the students know it, the parents know it, and the teachers know it, and so ultimately, they know that at the end of the day, they have to deliver. Current events, we have a longstanding Danish exchange, so we'll actually be going to Denmark next Friday, and there's also a Paris study group running over spring break, Salamanca, Spain study group, that's over the summer. We also attend annually the Cuculoras Film Festival. I actually take the ninth graders to that film festival, and we attend only the Global Shorts series that the Cuculoras Festival offers. The Jewish Film Festival attendance, we also have a dance partnership with our IB dance teacher through UNCW, which is a social justice dance partnership, and we just completed the extended essay presentations, which is the graduation project for IB students, and then also their creativity, activity service, community projects are ongoing. I think that's, that's it for us. Don't have any questions.
So the benefit to the student beyond the knowledge that they gain in the exposure to other countries as it relates to applying for a four-year college somewhere, can you speak to that briefly?
Sure. I would say it's, it's that, it's the preparation for college. So the stories I get from students as they visit honors colleges, scholarship weekends, that sort of thing, is that they come back very confident in what they know to do now. I think the writing skills that they acquire in the program more than exceed the preparation that they need to step foot on a college campus. Their presentation skills, their interactive skills, these are very mature, goal-setting students, and they are change-makers, and that's, that's who they are, and they will find places where they can exercise who they are. Yeah.
There's also the potential through the IB exam process to earn college credit.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And the wait, the waiting system is the same as AP coursework, so.
Thank you.
Sure. You got it.
Any other questions?
Didn't you take a group to Japan several years ago?
We did, last year.
You know, I'm still upset about that.
Uh, next time, that's an every-other-year trip. I'll remember you.
I thought you looked familiar.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Where's the Jewish Film Festival held?
I want, I want to say it's at Thalian Hall. This is the first year that we're attending.
I didn't know if it was here in town or where.
It is, and that's actually something that the pre-DP 10th grade students will attend, the AP World and honors English II students.
Any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you again for your support. Thank you.
So this will be Laney's fourth year of the STEM program. I'm going to start out, just, I've, I've learned a lot since being there last year, specifically designed for students who have a high interest in the sciences, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We're trying to produce students that are motivated to attend a STEM-based career, a college, to seek out a career in a few years, so we're constantly looking at where's the world going? How can we get those students better prepared? And so we're meeting those growing demands and developing our programs based on that. Cohorts, we have the engineering and the biomedical. At this point, we currently have 270 students enrolled in the STEM program at Laney. And as of last week, the committee started reviewing over 178th grade applications. So we have added Project Lead the Way engineering courses and plan to add two additional courses next year. We've taken a CTE resignation and working really closely with Shamika Shuford to bring on more Project Lead the Way, which everyone knows that-
Just let me interrupt you. Project Lead the Way was a program that started in eighth grade at Trask. It's a national curriculum around identified certain STEM areas. We did that in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, so it's been a, a great partnership, and Mr. Sherman was at Trask when we started that, and I'm glad to see it make its way to the high school.
Yeah, and so aerospace engineering is what we're looking at adding next year. The Health Science Department, we are now up to four instructors in that department. We had another CTE resignation last summer, which we met and decided we needed to add an additional position for that particular STEM program. So, and I'm going to let Ms. Sally talk to you a little bit about some of the expanded courses that her students, so that she works with them, face-to-face through televised and all that fancy stuff.
I'm a little stuffy, so you might have to, I can't get my voice. So thank you again for having us here. You know, I'm really excited to be able to share four years of growth, because, you know, we started this program in 2014, so, you know, we- know, we started this program in 2014, so, you know, we have slowly, you know, evolved over the past four years. I can't imagine what the next four will be. So, you know, I really have, I'm happy to have this opportunity to share this with you. One additional part of the program that we have added in the last two years in conjunction with the AIG program, we have added four courses with North Carolina School of Science and Math. These classes are free, so it's perfect. You know, we, we have, you know, four free instructors from Durham, and they meet with students daily. So right now, this semester, we have genetics and biotechnology, and we have honors forensic science class. They have actually worked with us to change their schedule so that it meets our course, you know, our schedule at Laney, our bell schedule. There are students from all over the state of North Carolina taking these courses. It's an interactive video conferencing class, so the kids see their teacher each day, they can, you know, speak with the teacher. So it's, it's been really successful. We're happy to have it, and like I said, they're free. And they've, they're actually adding two additional classes next year on their course catalog, I was really excited to see, and that was the computational thinking and coding, and that's something that we don't have a lot of CTE offerings for right now in the county. And also honors public health topics, and, you know, we have a lot of students that are college-bound, that are very interested in public health. I mainly wanted to spend my time or my slides tonight on just kind of sharing, you know, how we've grown and, you know, sharing some, we finally have, you know, I'm excited that we finally have some results. You know, I've been working at this for four years, and, and I'm thinking in the back of my head, well, I hope in four years, we have something that has come out of this good. I'm very pleased with it. I feel like, you know, Laney High School is too. We have 36 kids that will graduate from the first group in May. Out of those 36 kids, multiple kids have been accepted to multiple colleges here in North Carolina and the rest of the country. We're, we're still waiting on a couple. I know a kid told me today, he's waiting on Georgia Tech next week. So we're waiting on Stanford, we're waiting on some other colleges, but we're very excited to have these college acceptances as of right now. A few more accolades I wanted to share. Out of those students, you know, I've roughly averaged the scholarship offerings. These are not necessarily, you know, what they're taking with them to college, but as a total from different scholarships that have been offered to them, right now, we're over 550,000. And I could actually add to one of those since Friday. So two of those, we've had two finalists for the Good Night Scholarship to NC State, that's a STEM scholarship, and it's a full ride. And one of our Sea Perch members, he was here earlier, he actually received the scholarship, found out on Friday, and he's a first-generation college student from his family that will be attending NC State, so we're really excited about that. We've had three Morehead semifinalists, UNC Chancellor of Science finalists. We've also, I've got a student, I'm so excited, I've talked her into, looking into medical textiles, and that's a new degree at NC State, and she actually received the Centennial Scholarship to State a few weeks ago, so she'll be going there in the fall. And we've had several students receive honors college offers from ECU, and we do have a Levine Scholarship semifinalist, or finalist right now, and also a Crown finalist at UNC Charlotte. Four of our STEM students have been admitted in the last four years to School of Science and Math, so I have lost a few of my students to Science and Math, but I, you know, I'm proud of that, too, you know, they're expanding their education in Durham. And we also have two students right now who are actually duly enrolled, so they're not necessarily taking those interactive video conferences, conferencing classes with me, but they're actually, you know, taking classes with School of Science and Math and at Laney. So, you know, whenever they graduate and they apply to college, it's going to show that they've attended both institutions, so we're really excited about that. And also, our underwater robotics team that you guys saw earlier, they are headed to, it's, it's a national competition, but it's also international competition in May, so very excited about that. And we've had, you know, many successful student groups come out of the STEM program in the last four years. Our Health Occupation Students of America Club has grown, it's probably one of the largest chapters in the state. They're very successful. So I'm very proud of our students' accomplishments, and I just appreciate you letting us come. Thank you.
So audio 36, how many of those are going into science, science fields or STEM fields?
Um, I would say a majority. I do have one that is a school favorite, and he has really gotten into, he's our student body president, and I saw that he was going to NC State for political science, so I was kind of bummed out about, you know, but hey, I'm excited for him either way.
He's going to be great.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone, for letting us go last. We appreciate that. We're happy to bring up the rear. I'm very excited, I'm honored to be able to stand up here and talk to everybody about lyceum tonight. Since before I ever had anything to do with New Hanover High School, I remember people in the county talking about the Lyceum Academy, and they would say, yeah, Hanover's got that Lyceum Academy, and I'd say, I don't know what that is. People keep talking about it like everyone should know. And I was at another high school that I won't mention, so I tried to act like it really wasn't a big deal. But I would ask people who were in the know, and they'd say, I'd say, what is it? Can you sum it up? And they'd say, well, it's like an honors academy within the school. And I think, to some extent, that's a really fair and accurate statement. But, you know, honestly, having been there and seen it for the last few years, I feel like it's so much more than that. The, the number one thing I always tell students and parents when they, when they ask about, you know, the reasons for going into lyceum, one of the things I remember from years ago, when they talk about, you know, great lesson planning, they talk about great ideas for students to get them engaged, and they talk about interdisciplinary work, where you try and bring multiple curriculum into, into a project, into a lesson, so that you're hitting, you know, different avenues at the same time. And I feel like almost every time I go in to observe lyceum, that's what they're doing. Just last week, I went in to observe a reenactment of the 2015 World, World Climate Summit that was in Paris, and all the students that were grouped around the room represented nongovernmental organizations with, you know, a goal of reducing, and I'm going to butcher this, but ultimately, the goal was to reduce the global impact on the environment. And so they went through and up on the board, they had charts and percentages, and they had to talk about, as an NGO, what they were going to do to reduce deforestation and afforestation, and how they were going to contribute, you know, how many millions they were going to do here, and how is it going to impact fossil fuels, and, you know, frankly, a lot of it went over my head, but it was impressive, and I really enjoyed seeing the engagement from the students. One of the things that, one of the things that is, is easy to understand about lyceum is the way that it has been set up up until now, as we're moving forward, is it's been traditionally set up for 11th and 12th graders. So a lot of students will come to New Hanover with intentions of applying for the Lyceum Academy. And then as they begin with us in ninth and 10th grade, they have a curriculum path in mind, and we have a, you know, a counselor who works with them to ensure that they have the prerequisites they need to begin as 11th graders. And once they do that, they all sort of hit the ground running with the same, same schedule. We're expanding that moving forward, and I know the board has talked about this, to include some pre-lyceum courses for the ninth and 10th grade beginning next year. We're still in the works of planning exactly what that's going to look like, but we've got some pretty good ideas. And so ultimately, the way it has been set up in the past and is currently, they have their course, their coursework scheduled for them for the 11th and 12th grade, they spend the first four hours of their day in the Lyceum Academy. They start at 7:30 in the morning, they go straight through to 11:30, and then their second period ending, or the rest of the school's second period end, ending coincides with the end of their lyceum time, and then those students have the opportunity to take classes, elective classes, and other things outside of lyceum. You know, there's a lot of information in the slides ahead. I'm going to actually hand it over here to Mr. Gordon Massengill, who's the founder and dean of Lyceum Academy. I had to check with him before I stood up, but we are now in its 20th year, in the 20th year, which is really quite impressive and makes me feel young in my own way, because it's older than I've been working in education. So, like I said, I'm really honored to have the opportunity to talk about it and try and sell it to the public. Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. And thank you, Board, for the opportunity to speak to you about lyceum again today. Lyceum is a two-year course of study that mainly focused on the 11th and 12th grade year, where the teachers loop with the students in the four core academics. We do begin our school day an hour earlier than the main school at 7:30 a.m., so that we can have four uninterrupted hours to spend with our students on a daily basis. We did that so that we can teach our courses over the entire school year and have approximately 55-minute periods every day, since the College Board tests the AP curriculum, which is the heart of our program, only in May. They have not succumbed to North Carolina's version of the school calendar, and so we have a month of school remaining. And those AP courses that are taught on the semester either end at the end of January and don't have any contact with those instructors until the tests are in May, or they have to start basically in the beginning of February and be ready to test that entire course in May with spring break in the middle of it. And we have found a greater success rate of doing it as a year-long course in smaller time increments throughout the year. The teachers in the four core academics work together for group planning so that we can make that many AP courses possible simultaneously, because many of our students, to say that they are overachievers would be an understatement. During their recitation time, they take advantage of other AP coursework that we offer at the school outside of the curriculum of the lyceum, as well as taking advantage of North Carolina Virtual Public School courses also. Some of them are enrolled in multiple of those courses at the same time. So they are taking full advantage and given the opportunity to have a recitation, which is a part of our program on a daily basis. We have remediation time to work with the students, as well as they have time to work with one another on group projects, which is another fundamental piece of our program, teaching them the skills that are going to be necessary when they hit college, and are randomly assigned a group in a lecture hall of people they don't know at all, and then they have to learn how to work together. So we work on, on that facet of it within the program as well. During the recitation time, as I said, it's for remediation for group project time, or just a chance to get caught up on the heavy workload and demands of the lyceum program. These are our sample schedules. The other key thing about us starting early in 7:30 every day is that we are in total control as instructors of the instructional time from 7:30 until 11:40 each day. So we get to structure our day to deliver the lessons in the manner they needed to be delivered. Another tenet of the program is that we only test one academic subject per day so that we can get maximum results out of our students. Since we group plan, we have to coordinate all that, and we have a group Google Calendar where we have to go in a month in advance and five for test days, and only one test can happen per day. So we have to have a little group chat session and decide who gets to test and who's going to push their test a day or two in the other direction. But we want to, we want them to perform at their very best, so we give them this opportunity by testing only one subject a day. And that's an example of the schedule over there on the left side of your screens. We also have the students grouped by Greek letter, and the Greek letters, if you notice, they move around, it's not the same group of Greek letters that move through the schedule during the day. And the Greek letters are small cohorts of like classes. So the alphas all take the same classes, the beta all take the same classes, but if you notice, we mix them up throughout the day so that they're exposed to each of their classmates during the lyceum day. Now those letters, the numbers out to the left is the order that the classes meet in, but that changes on a daily basis. So they never know what's first, second, third, or fourth, so homework is actually done at home, because they can't do second period's homework during the first period because they don't know what's first, second, third, or fourth. So we're trying to instill in them the habits of preparation and due diligence in their studies prior to going to college, and you have all this free time all of a sudden, and then we end up with a very disappointing GPA at the end of the freshman year. So we're trying to instill that time management and work ethic in them with this daily schedule. Also, it keeps it new every day for everybody, including the faculty. The schedule on the right side shows our other opportunity that's afforded by this schedule, where we can rearrange the letters from their, the normal classes they would have, and we can combine and have group seminars so that we can, for the first two hours, teach a history/English cohort, and in the background, the science and math are still rotating between their classes, and then everybody that was taking science and math for the first two hours go to the special project the second two hours of the day, and then vice versa, the others go to the math and science. So that's just an example of the versatility we have within our program. Percentage of students who made threes to fives, which earned college credit on the AP exam in 2016 and 2017 respectively, I'm very proud to tell you that the Lyceum Academy has the highest pass rate on AP exams of any group in the district in New Hanover County Schools. The Lyceum Academy in 2016, 80% of the exams taken in lyceum received college credit for those courses. And in 2017, 71% received college credit for those courses. Also, the lyceum math teachers, we have honors and AP students that are coming to us for the program, and it's really hard to show growth when you already start out with that level of student. But I'm also very proud to tell you that our math teachers demonstrated the highest growth, highest growth of all the precautious teachers in the state of North Carolina for the past two consecutive years. So they're taking high and moving them higher. For college readiness, I share this slide with you to let you know how we're comparing with the other students at our school. And in the 2017, 138 students at New Hanover High were designated by the AP Scholars Program, and of those, 122 were Lyceum Academy students. And you can see down, as we get higher and higher with the requirements, if you look down at the national AP scholar, there are only 11 of those, and to qualify for that, you have to have at least a four and four or higher on eight or more exams, and we had 11 of those students, and every one of them were in the Lyceum Academy at New Hanover. Also, we're very proud to say that three of the last four years, we have had Morehead, Kane scholarship recipients. We've had multiple finalists and semifinalists, but we actually had three recipients of the Moreheads, Kane over the past four years, and we've got two Park Scholar recipients over the past four years consecutively. We also currently, right now, she just finished her interviews yesterday, we have a finalist again this year for the Morehead, Kane Scholarship at UNC Chapel Hill. We currently, numbers-wise, we're serving 112 students total in grades 11 and 12. One of the things that's been a godsend with the leadership of our administration at New Hanover was that we have a Lyceum counselor now, a dedicated Lyceum counselor, to follow the students who expressed interest as entering ninth graders and follow them all the way through their experience in high school. We currently have 74 applicants that are sophomores for next year's entering class into lyceum as a junior. There's 80 freshmen on the pre-lyceum pathway that are currently freshmen at New Hanover, and we have 98th grade students thus far who have filled out the interest document declaring that they wish to be pre-lyceum students at New Hanover High School to participate in the pre-lyceum courses. And beginning this fall, we are committed to offering an interdisciplinary-style course in the ninth grade and the 10th grade, combining probably a history and English teacher in the ninth grade is our plans at current, and a math and English teacher, which seems like an odd marriage, but the courses work well together from an interdisciplinary standpoint for the 10th grade. And offering and offering those as pre-Lyceum. So, that is the numbers that we have right now. The other thing that I will say in the scholarship money, I did not include this in a slide, is that of the just over $5 million that New Hanover High School was awarded last year, almost $5 million of it was Lyceum Academy students of scholarships that had been offered. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have one. What percentage of students drop out of Lyceum from the time they enter? Because I know it's very rigorous, and I had two children that went through your program, and they did stay in.
Yes, sir.
But what percentage drop out?
We have about a 10% attrition rate between junior and senior year, but that also varies. That's probably the average amount that we have, but it varies with different groups.
I suspect with the ninth and 10th grade pre-program, that might help that attrition rate.
I think it will, just as the IB program has. We've always had the pre-curriculum there as a pathway, but we've never had the actual classes that teach in the interdisciplinary style that are more project-based than the traditional classroom is afforded. Because we're also planning to do these courses as year-long courses as well, and not on the semester basis. So, it will give them a true taste and authentic experience with the Lyceum style and methodology.
Just so I'm correct, you're using kind of the pre-IB model for a pre-Lyceum program, even though they're totally separate programs, using kind of a pre-IB model for the ninth and 10th grade?
We have always had a pre-Lyceum curriculum pathway that's been published on our site, but we've never tried to consolidate the cohort and follow them through specific classes. And that is the difference that we're instituting this fall. But we're also combining some of those pre-Lyceum courses that we originally had on a semester basis to be part of a year-long experience, just as the courses are within the program.
Is that going to be ninth and 10th grade, the pre?
They'll, yes, sir. There'll be a ninth-grade specialty course, and then we're following cohorts through, and a 10th-grade specialty course with cohorts being followed through with the help of Ms. McMahon.
Dr. Markley says we don't provide transportation for the 7:30 class?
We do not.
Do we have many children who express an interest that aren't able to because of transportation?
So far, we have not. We, any person who has gone through the application, and we do have an interview process where we go through and interview each person, we ask, we give them the opportunity to address that. And anybody who's expressed interest, we have done a variety of things over the years to provide transportation possibilities for them, which includes carpooling with other members in the Lyceum program, as well as, one year, a young lady qualified for help through the social services at our school and was able to get a pass for a taxi at that time.
Oh, really?
So, they were able to provide for them regardless. And the other thing that I did not mention as well, under the, sort of the financial side of things, you know, experiential learning is paramount to our program. We travel extensively. We have never, in the 20-year history of this program, left anyone out of any experience due to financial needs. And that is largely due to our Lyceum Academy Parents Boosters Club, which is very active.
That's wonderful. Thank you for your presentation. It was very interesting.
Thank you very much.
Let me just simply say that I am very happy to say that I was on the board when you brought this program to us. And, you know, it was a unique program. We had never seen anything like this before. But I am happy that we did, in fact, agree to support it. I'm also happy to say that I have two children who graduated from the Lyceum program, went on to college, did exceedingly well in college, and are now very successful. So, as a personal testimony, I do know the value of the Lyceum program. I also know the value of the parents who have to be involved to make sure it is successful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Markley, thank you for bringing this to us.
Well, it was a topic of conversation all through the last couple of meetings as we've talked about redistricting and their impacts. And you can see each of these programs is different, unique, but they all serve a need in our community. When you see the STEM program, that's where a lot of our careers are heading, and you see those students from Laney, who are, most of them heading into that field. You've seen Lyceum, which is sort of the grandfather of all the signature programs in our county and the impact it's had. As a board, you're creating programs that meet the needs of students. The Board, you guys have always talked about being a system of choices. This is one of the choices you offer to students in the district.
Dr. Markley, you know how you have job fairs. Is there an education fair to show students the four different programs?
Yes, there is. I'll let Dr. Smith elaborate on this a little bit.
Yes, this year, we showcased to all of our middle schools our signature programs. Part of that was to make sure that they were aware so that they could make informed choices and to promote those without, throughout the district.
And how were those held and where was it held?
Hold on, just a second.
Those folks, you-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Al O'Brien facilitated that, so I'll ask him to step to the mic, and he can talk to you about the specifics of that.
Right.
I wanted to make sure he was in the room first.
I just, it's such an opportunity. And for a parent and a child to be able to look at the four programs and to determine which one of the four best suits them is important.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So, with the help of the Signature Program lead teachers, we visited every middle school and had an opportunity for the rising ninth graders, current eighth graders, to have an opportunity to hear about the programs from our signature leads. And then, corresponding on the same night, we would have a parental presentation. So, we would go to three middle schools, and then we would have a parent presentation that night for the parents so that they could hear the same information that their students heard that day in the daytime presentation. So, not only did we-
So, students went during the day and parents went at night?
They had an opportunity to come that night. So, and they could bring their students back with them if they wanted to in the evening session. So, we covered it both, you know, strategically on the same day for the students and for the parents so that they could hear the same information in the same timeframe so that that would help them make an informed decision about which one.
Well, they're also, I guess they're recruiting various signature programs. And then also, you have Isaac Bear and Wilmington Early College and CTEC. All this is also being quite a few options and choices that-
Are they doing Isaac Bear and Wilmington Early College at the same time?
Yes.
So, yes, at the same time that we're doing the signature programs from the traditional high schools, during that same event, we also have all of the non-traditional high schools. And they're presenting on their programs as well so that they all hear the same information on the eight different opportunities that they have throughout our district. So, they hear all of that on the same day, both our signature programs and also our non-traditional options as well. So, they get an opportunity to hear all of that, the students and the parents on the very same, in the same timeframe.
Was the attendance good at each of those?
Yes, ma'am. We had good attendance. And for the parents, if they can't come to the session that corresponds with the day that their student attended, they can come to a fair, an opportunity later. So, our last one was the largest. But we probably average anywhere from 150 to 250 parents a night at these different presentations.
Does that help increase our minority percentages in the signature programs?
I hope so, but that is something that we still need to take a look at and something that we still need to work on.
What are, does anybody know what the percentages are for minorities in each of the signature programs?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I do think it's something that we should look to try to increase across the district.
Can you get that information to us, Dr. Markley?
Yes.
Thank you. You never say no.
Not in public.
That was good. This is wonderful, dense information. Could we get that on the systems website as well as the individual schools? Certainly, they need it on their website.
And I'm fairly certain that we have that on the, I think we do advertise this on our website when we're having these programs.
If it spelled out with what the, like, we've received tonight, they already have that in-
We also do a Connect Ed call as well to make sure that they're informed of the different opportunities. So, we try to cover it, the publicity as much as we can to make sure people are aware of the opportunity. So, through the Connect Ed phone calls, and we also advertise through our schools, and we have our schools advertise through their websites so that we try to cover as much publicity as we can so that parents are aware of the opportunity and our students are, they have the opportunity because they're seated in front of us those days when we go to the schools.
It's a lot for them to process, the excitement of going to high school and then to make these decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
But, yes, I would encourage just to look and ensure that we're reaching every child. If the parents didn't get to come or the child doesn't understand, that we continue to work with them individually. Dr. Markley, I'm always being asked by parents, and not just parents, people in the community about our signature programs and what we have to offer. Do we present this on the educational channel at any time?
We do through our local TV, our in-house TV. We'll talk about the registration process at various times. We've had different folks come in to talk about those programs. We just did a magnet fair. In fact, Gordon was there at the Independence Mall where we set up in the middle of the mall for folks to come see not only our high school signature programs, but some of our other programs as well. We don't limit ourselves to one medium. We try to hit as many different mediums as possible.
It's important that we do that because we need the public support during bond time and just on educational issues. So, the more that we can get the word out, the better it is.
Yeah, if you add up the total number of students who are in our specialty schools and signature programs, that's almost a third of our high school students who have identified with one of these programs.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to include, we also include Mosely Performing Learning Center in that advertisement and promotion as well.
Dr. Markley, what are the, for the four signature programs that we talked today, what are there specific costs related to the school system for those programs?
Each one, each school has a different kind of impact. We provide a, well, you, the Board, have approved a $20,000 grant that goes with those positions. You've also approved an additional position at each school to support those positions. It does have an impact on their schedules, so we look at staffing at the schools a little bit. We've added extra teachers if we needed to for support at the schools to help out with those. But I think we're committed to offering something unique at each of our schools. And you, as a Board, have supported that over the years and have beefed that up in the time that I've been here. So, that's a credit to the folks who are on this Board who deal with that budget process. And you're committed to providing some kind of high-quality education and programming at each of our schools. But, yeah, we do offer additional support at each of the schools for that.
Has there ever been thought about adding additional programs? Or are we, you know, the four that we have, or those are the four core that we're, that the school system's committed to?
I think when you're looking at each school, you could look at a second academy at each school, but I, really, to me, you'd have to make a case as to why, why that program's going to be different and have that kind of impact.
And the one, I mean, you look at Ashley, and you have the marine science. Obviously, we have a plan to increase that. But if it doesn't increase like it's expected, is there something else that you've ever considered?
I think that would be, as they're going through their process, if they want to look at changing and expanding that program, I think that would be one to have. Because that was, that is the smallest one.
Correct.
And with a new director, I'd like to see her have an opportunity to build that program. And then if it doesn't, we can look at a different direction. But given its location down there near the beach and a lot of its students, it would seem the marine science is a natural fit for them. So, I'm hoping we can build that. If we need to add a secondary piece to that, then I think we can look at that.
I'd consider some type of surfing academy or something that, you know, build your own surfboard and-
All right, any other questions? I want to thank each one of y'all for coming. I think they're important, as Dr. Markley said, in our educational process, gives parents an opportunity to go in different directions as to what they may want to do. And also offers an opportunity for parents to be able to use the signature programs as an opportunity to move their children from one school to another without the necessity of redistricting. So, anyway.
Mr. Hayes was asking a little bit about Mosely. Mosely is, it's one of our specialty schools. And I'll have them come in and talk about their program and they've got there. But if you ever want to go to a school that is just a great place to spend the day, Mosely's that place. We've got three pre-K programs there, thanks to the county. We have our TPYA program, which is our traditional program for young adults, as well as we've got a National Academy program there for students who want a different kind of high school schedule. It is a phenomenal program. It's one of those little quiet hidden gems. And we also have our online academy. We have students who don't ever set foot in any of our schools, taking courses at that school. So, we'll, we've got Mr. Pearson here, the principal. He's done a great job building that program. But we'll ask him to come in, can you come in next month and give us a sort of an overview? Excellent.
Yeah, I saw you sitting back there. I thought you were coming up too. I just-
All right. Moving on, next item on the agenda is school safety, Appendix I. Dr. Holiday.
Try to work this thing I can. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Back when I was in high school, I was a part of an organization called the Demolay. Any of y'all might have heard of it. It's a Masonic organization. We had a part in our meetings called nine o'clock interpolation. We're getting awful close to nine o'clock interpolation. So, I'm going to try to be as quick as I can and at the same time, give you the information that you need. I brought the experts with me tonight. Most of y'all know our safety officer and safety director, Dave Spencer. What you probably didn't know is he does own a jacket. He put it on tonight, come for this. And we're glad to have him here. And he is one of the experts around the state in this area. And we're very happy to have him. We're also happy to have our supervisor of counseling and social work, Ms. Tanya Jordan, who is the expert there in that field. Also listed on our slide is Kristen Jackson, who is our Director of Student Sports Services. Kristen is actually off learning about some mental health issues that we're going to be talking about in our, part of our presentation here tonight. That's why she's not here, otherwise she would be here with us. And also, at some point during the presentation, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Mr. Eddie Anderson, is going to be available to answer some questions that you might have. What we're going to do is take a brief look at our safety programs as one portion of our agenda, taking a look at our buildings and what we're doing with our buildings, and then taking that critical look at student mental health and what we're doing in that regard, which is why Tanya is here. And I'm going to try to brief the slides, and the experts are going to provide any information that you might need. And certainly, we will go as slowly as you need to go and ask, answer any questions that you have. Mr. Bullard, I don't think you're going to have to worry about going out tomorrow. There's eight to 10 inches of snow in New York, so you'll be okay tonight as well. So, most of y'all don't know, Mr. Bullard is a Carolina basketball fan. But for some ungodly reason, they're playing the ACC Tournament in New York this year. And I don't even think that's in the Bible. I don't even think that's right. But, but they are. So, Mr. Bullard. So, we're going to look at our programs, our partnerships, the things that we do drills in schools, our plans and our inspections, training, facilities improvements. And then we're going to look at our mental health supports in our schools, which is critical. One of the things that you're learning about that is going on right now is that the folks in this- One of the things that you're learning about that is going on right now is that the folks and the shooters and the folks that are doing damage in the schools generally have some sort of mental health issue. And oftentimes, that mental health issue has been missed and we're doing the very best we can with your help to make sure that we don't miss those. And I will tell you that you guys do a great job of allowing us to have the resources that we need in our schools. And I'm gonna point that out to you as we go forward. Okay, some of the programs that we're using in our schools for our students, and we're looking at discipline programs, oftentimes, you think about the punitive pieces of it. But, one of the things that we're most proud of is we've probably got one of the best positive behavior intervention and support programs, which is PBIS in the state. Judy Stubblefield kind of heads that up for us and we work in many of our elementary schools and our middle schools. And actually, some of our high schools are now trying to come on board with that because it is so important to stress good behavior and what is appropriate behavior as just opposed to just punishing the behavior. We've also looked at our in-school suspension programs over the years. You've given us some resources to do our in-school suspension. Judy Stubblefield and Kristen Jackson, along with Tanya, actually work with our in-school suspension coordinators in our schools and actually try to teach curriculum and replacement behaviors for the children that go there. You've also got a, what we believe is a signature discipline program in our, and we got people looking at it from all over the country at our J.C. Rowe Center, which also houses, which houses short-term suspension, long-term suspension, and a, what we consider a very innovative program in our transition program, which people come, which students are coming in from youth development centers, which used to be called training schools. They come back in through the J.C. Rowe, or if they're coming back in from a mental health facility, they come back through J.C. Rowe. Or, if there's some particular need for them to transition back into a regular school and they've not been in a regular school for some time, either because of a mental health issue or because of some type of behavior issue, that's the point that they're coming through. And several years ago, you created, I think, probably one of the most innovative programs in the state, marrying mental health and student issues in our Lake Forest program. That program serves kindergarten through eighth grade. And this year, we also added a transition program. Because the transition program, they don't have to have the day treatment side, which is actually a mental health billable service. And on the Lake Forest side of that program, they do have the day treatment for K-8. And one of the things we're looking at for next year is adding a day treatment program for our high school over at J.C. Rowe. Because that's one of the holes that we have, there are some problems. And I'll get that to you when we talk about budget, don't want to get ahead, out, too far ahead of my skis tonight. But, just to let you know, we are looking at the possibility of going day treatment for our high schools. We did have an option for day treatment, a private option here that we were partnering with. But, the problem with day treatment for high school is very difficult to get the children to go to a day treatment program unless they're court ordered. And it's difficult to get that court ordered at this point. So, just letting you know, these are some of the things that we've got out on the horizon that we're looking at. We think we have some of the best partnerships as far as with school safety anywhere in the state. We have great law enforcement partners, both with Sheriff McMahon. And this goes back, we were talking about this today, and many of you were on the board back when we first started our School Resource Officer Program under Sheriff Joe McQueen. And the interesting part about Sheriff McQueen was Sheriff McQueen was also, they didn't call him resource officer in those days, but back during the, back during the nineteen, early 1970s, when we're having so much trouble here in the community, the sheriff actually put some sheriff deputies in our schools and Joe McQueen was one of those, one of those deputies that was assigned to the schools and he was actually assigned to Hoggart. So, he had a great understanding of what needs to happen in schools and actually started our School Resource Program with you guys back in the early 90s. So, that program's been around a while. And Sheriff McMahon was actually a resource officer at Laney High School when I was assistant principal there. And his chief deputy was also a school resource officer. So, many of the command structure of the New Hanover County Sheriff's Department have been resource officers. We were working last week with the captain of the detectives, who we're working closely with, with all the stuff we've got going on now, and Captain McNeese. And he was also a resource officer at Hoggart High School. So, we've got great partnerships with our law enforcement folks and a lot of that has to do with the fact that you guys are willing to work with them. Dave works closely with city and county fire departments because they are first responders, not only in fire situations, but really in any emergency situation. So, we work great with them. The New Hanover County Emergency Management Team, we work very closely with them. Dave actually is on that group and if we have any issues at school, especially during any community disaster, Dave starts out there and then the rest of us kind of go out there and work with them as well. But, Dave is actually our contact with the emergency management. Our hospital, we have a partnership with them. Department of Social Services, we work hand-in-hand with them on all kinds of issues, mental health issues as well as safety issues in our school. And of course, the health department with, with our school nurse program, which they're also first responders, and also any disease prevention. Because oftentimes, we get that as a part of our school safety issue as well. And since, if they're, like, when we had the flu epidemic, those types of things, those are critical pieces of our safety plan. And without the health department, it would be really hard to kind of pull that off. Drills that we do, and Dave can speak specifically to this or any questions that you might have about this. We do lockdown drills, at least two a year per school. One we do in the fall, which is done by the school staff. And then, we will come in in the spring and Dave will bring in law enforcement and they will actually critique the lockdown and actually give feedback to the principal. And that feedback will come to me and to Dr. Markley and we will be able to look at what's going on at the school. Did they miss something and then how did we correct that? And they actually have a sit-down after that lockdown in the spring and go over everything about the drill with the principal and the leadership team. And then, the principal and the leadership team at that school carries that back out to their staff. It's a very good exercise and we don't announce it. They kind of figure it out sometimes and Dave has to kind of get creative because, you know, they'll call each other, you know, and say, well, he's at my school, does he come into yours next? And Dave tries to mix it up a little bit. So, we, we're not trying to catch anybody, but we're trying to make it as realistic as we can make it. Because in a lockdown drill, you're not gonna know. And we also try to make it at different times during the day. Because what would you do if the children are outside or inside and those kinds of things? They have to know what to do. And what happens if it's at lunch, which is a critical time? They have to know what to do. And so, we make it as realistic as we can during the lockdowns and we've gotten a lot of benefit out of that. We also have and do during the times when our schools aren't occupied, we've done some active shooter training with the sheriff's department. Couple of years ago, we did this out at Holly Shelter. The sheriff brought in an entire team from around the state and we had not only our officers, but officers from around the region participating in this active shooter drill. And they were actually using airsoft ammunition and they were padded up. They actually wanted to put me in that and I said, no way in the world I'm going in that, I'll stay right here in the library. But, it was a very realistic situation and to see some of those officers coming out of that and the looks on their faces as they were coming out, because it was incredibly realistic. Because like we used to say in football, you practice like you play. And Colonel Hans was in the Marines and he would say, you train like you fight. Well, that's kind of how we viewed that. We wanted to make it as realistic as we could. We also have the emergency response teams coming into the schools, doing drills during like spring break. And in the summertime, you'll come out, you may come by school and you'll see them all geared up and going into our schools. Because again, we're trying to practice as realistic, realistically as we can. And then, we can't discount the fact that we live where we live and we're going to have weather issues. And sometimes, the weather issues that we have are not gonna be like, well, we know that hurricane's coming in, in three days and we can get ready. Sometimes, the severe weather hits us, especially this time of year, which we're getting ready to have severe weather training, tornado drill tomorrow, tomorrow. So, if you come by our schools tomorrow and you see that we're all hunkered down, you know, that's what we're doing, we're participating in statewide drill. And you don't know when that's getting ready to happen. So, a lot of the things that we do, we practice beforehand because we don't know when we're gonna do it and we try to make it just as realistically as we can.
Before we move on there, I've had questions about drills. Is there a question specific to drills that you, as a board, you have?
And you might want to point out the difference between lockdown and shelter in place.
Excellent question, Ms. Kavanaugh. We, sorry. Well, it's been nice working for y'all. Ms. Nichols, I'm sorry. I was looking over here and I was saying, you know I know who you are.
Even he did it, Jeanette, even he did it.
Like I said, it's been nice working for y'all.
You're gonna need lockdown.
Yeah, maybe I need to go into lockdown. Now, I've lost my place. Can't imagine why.
Lockdown, shelter in place.
It is very, it is very critical that you know the difference. When we're in lockdown, we're not doing anything. And a lockdown means that we believe that there is an external threat. And we are going to lock down and hunker down. We're gonna get in places where you can't see us, we're not doing anything, we're not teaching. We are simply getting the kids in places where they can be as safe as possible and we're locking every door that we can lock. External doors, internal doors, we're gonna lock down tight and do nothing. Shelter in place means that we are in a caution situation. Law enforcement may be conducting an activity close by. Or, there may be a robbery that has occurred in the neighborhood and law enforcement believes that the suspect may be coming in our direction. And they, we may not need to lock down completely because they're not coming to us, but we just need to be ready in case. So, we need to go into shelter in place, which means we're gonna continue with inside activities and we're gonna lock our external doors and we're not gonna let anybody in or out. And we are very careful, we don't use the old term of administrative lockdown or some other thing that you might have heard of. There are two specific types of conditions that we're gonna be in. Shelter in place means one thing, lockdown means another. And we don't confuse those two terms and we don't mix them up. Dave, did I get that right? So, just make sure that when you hear that, and we also don't allow, and we've worked with our principals on this, because sometimes our principals will have, have in the past, and I understand why they would want to do this, if they would have something going on in the building, like someone would have a medical emergency and they would want to keep the halls clear, if they would say, we're going in shelter in place and we'll get this done. We tell them not to do that. Because shelter in place indicates some kind of threat somewhere and we're trying to make sure that we have secured our perimeter. Whereas, if there's a medical emergency inside the building, we just want to tell our folks, stay in your classrooms. We're not gonna put them in a state, because when we put them in a state, that moves us into a law enforcement state that we're dealing with. And since we're, we're almost symbiotic with the sheriff's department, working in our schools the way that we do, we're not, we don't want to alert the sheriff's department, get them into a heightened state of awareness. If all we're trying to do is get the EMTs in there to get, to get either a student or a staff member who's in distress. But, that's a very good question.
For lockdown, you talked about locking specific doors for classrooms, so each classroom you can control by lock?
Yes, sir, every, are you saying?
For the doors?
Yes.
So, each classroom has automatic lock doors if you go into a lockdown?
Every, no, not every classroom door has an automatic lock. The classroom doors will have to be locked by the teacher.
Okay.
Teachers can lock every door from the inside of the classroom.
Right.
Panic buttons?
We have panic buttons in our elementary schools. Yes, in all of our schools.
And those are mainly in the administration?
And in our administration buildings. We actually have a panic button in our administration building down there as well. So, if we see one of y'all coming, we hit the lock down, I'm kidding. We do have panic buttons.
Correct, it's primarily at the front desk area.
And that's automatically 911, sheriff's department, everything, when they hit that panic button at the schools, they're all there.
Are there any other things that we currently have in our schools, other than when you go into lockdown or if there was an imminent issue other than the panic buttons and teachers can lock their doors?
There are security cameras at the school. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, our sheriffs can access those, those security cameras through our systems?
They have to go through our technology for.
The SRO officers onsite have access when they're in their offices. We were working with them about having access in case there was an active shooter and they did not want that at the time.
Would you say that again? The SROs did not want what?
We were, you know, in case there wasn't, you know, the instance of an active shooter, we were talking with them about having access at that point. And the last time we spoke, they're gonna go in no matter what. They're not gonna sit there and wait for us to give them access and pull up cameras, they're just gonna go in, so.
The SRO at the school?
Well, just the sheriff, all of them. You know, if there is an active shooter, they're not waiting for anything. Everybody who comes is gonna go straight in and deal with it. They're not gonna wait to look at cameras to see where somebody is, is what they informed us.
We segues right into our next slide, which is our safety plans. We do have an emergency operation plan. And this emergency operation plan was developed specifically for us. And you see the different agencies that assisted us with our development of our plan. Much of our plan is public, but some of it is not, simply because we do not want the bad guys to know what we're doing. And one of the things that is not a public record is your safety plan. Because you do have some need to maintain some of that as private. So, that law enforcement will be, will be doing some activity and we will be doing some things that we don't necessarily want the bad guys to know about once we, once we go into those heightened states of concern. But, I will tell you this, these plans have been extensively developed and experts from around the country have assisted us in putting these together. And I can remember when we started, we talked about, we talked about safety a lot when I was coming up through the ranks back in the late 80s, early 90s. But, when we got some wake-up calls in the 90s with the school shootings in Kentucky that happened in the mid 90s and then, of course, the one that got everybody's attention around the nation, which was Columbine, we really started hunkering down and making sure that we had some plans in place. And because of that, have resulted in a lot of the things that we do today. You, our campuses are not eas, are as easily accessible as they were back in the day, we'd call it. Especially our elementary schools and our, and our middle schools. We're working on three of our comprehensive high schools, but as you know, they present particular challenges. New Hanover High School has multiple buildings and a major highway running through the middle of it. Hoggart and Laney have multiple buildings and they, students change classes at least four times a day. Where we're, the entire student body is moving from, oftentimes, from one building to the next. Their, the buildings were built during times when campuses were built that way. Ashley is a little more conducive to a one entrance, one exit, like our middle and our elementary schools are, because that was built, as you recall, in 2001. So, we're not saying that it's impossible, we're just simply saying we're gonna have to look at some different ways of making those campuses more secure than they are.
You've got, that you have parent representation. How does a parent like Ms. Harris get to be part of the representation?
Dave?
The group that works on this plan is our crisis management team and which has representatives from each of those, except for the Department of Homeland Security and the Center for Safer Schools. So, in the past, what's happened as far as parent representation has been one of the representatives of the PTA, PTO group that's in this county.
So, could someone like Ms. Harris get in touch with you to get more involved on representation?
What we would leave that for is, is to ask for our, our PTA and PTO council and to see whom they would have represent.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. As I've stated earlier, there are various inspections that are carried on yearly with our sheriff's department safety officer. And not only lockdown drills, but monthly drills that we are required to conduct. Most of you are aware of the fire drills that we do. We also, like I said, the tornado drills that we're doing tomorrow. And we are inspected and we do look for feedback from our community on what we're doing and what we can do better. Lots of training opportunities in our county, as you can see. We have safety teams in all of our schools and Mr. Spencer actually meets with the, with the district-wide safety team. We actually do actual tabletop exercises with this group where we actually look at a scenario and then everybody has to, has a piece in it, has to, has, has to work that out. And those are ongoing activities that we do. And we have all of our partners at the table when we're doing that. Oftentimes, if you'll come by the Spencer Building and you'll see all these law enforcement vehicles there, generally it's because Mr. Spencer's having one of his meetings and they're doing one of these exercises. So, this is something that we do all the time. I'm gonna ask Eddie if he would to come up and we're gonna talk a little bit about some facilities improvements that we're looking at. I mentioned briefly what we're looking at for the high schools, just a little bit. But Eddie's got a little bit more on the ball than I have about this. But we are looking at some site improvements, especially around our high schools. But Eddie can just give a word?
Thank you. And, and looking at our facilities and the improvements that we've made, the first thing I'd tell you is that we, we've been doing this for so long now that a lot of the things that we do, we just, we just naturally build it into the design of our new schools without even thinking about it, which is a really good thing. We're constantly expanding, not only with renovations and additions, you know, expanding what we're doing in new school construction into our existing facilities, but we're also learning of new, new technologies, new methods for making our schools safer. So, we're expanding what we're doing as well. Just briefly looking at the, the four items there, with site improvements, one of the things that we're trying to do is really readily identify our schools, not only from the road, you know, you want to be able to see a school name, a, a street address, but regardless where you are on that property or entering that property, you may be entering from, you know, the rear of the site, an adjacent property. You know, there should be something, whether it's landscaping, fencing, something to alert you that you are now on a school property. And so, we're, when we're designing schools, we're trying to do that. Inside the, the school site, I think the directional signage, not only for pedestrian, vehicular traffic, has gotten much better, as well as the directional signage inside of our schools and the pedestrian and vehicular traffic flow. You know, keeping our students, our buses, our staff and our parent pickup and drop-off separated as much as possible. But especially with the new schools, you'll, you'll notice driving on those campuses that you really have very little option. When you pull on this campus, you can, you can only go one direction and you're gonna exit that campus in, in one direction. Building improvements over the years, the audio/video system at the front entrance to, you know, push, push the buzzer and, and be able to enter the building. We've expanded to all of the elementary and middle schools. The visitor sign-in and badging, you know, when you go in, you've gotta sign in. And I can tell you from experience, if you, if I don't have my badge or that sticker on, people in the building will stop you and ask you who you are and what you're doing. The security vestibules that we're adding in our new schools, we hope to expand those into some of our existing schools. Electronic access locks, they have been installed in all of the elementary and middle schools. We have in the capital budget for this year to expand that to our high schools. I know there's some, we're gonna, we want to expand to give those high schools some, the capability, how that will be implemented and, you know, and how that will work during the school year. We're, we're still working on that with the principals. Buses, security cameras have been installed on the yellow buses, GPS tracking capability and emergency response. The law enforcement has floor plans of every one of our schools. And those floor plans identify not only utilities, but all the emergency systems that are in that school. And then those floor plans, in addition to, to us giving them to them, we also have them in a Knox box that's at the front entrance of every school building. So, law enforcement or the fire department can open that box, get master keys to our facilities and, and obtain those floor plans as well. So, as I mentioned, you know, going forward...
Mr. Anderson, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, I guess we, the, the way the schools have been built was Snipes and then we're at Portis Neck now and now we're doing College Park and Blair. What have we done to kind of improve security at the, those schools in those, in the last, what, eight years since, since Snipes was redone? And do we consult with someone to implement the best, the new, improved security measures? I understand we're doing cameras and the visitor badges, but what are we doing to ensure that we're limiting access as we build new schools?
Well, I'd tell you that, I mean, we're, we're not consulting with a security consultant per se, but security is on the forefront of every architect, every engineer. If they're doing schoolwork, that's, that's what they're thinking about. And even in, with landscaping and site design as well. So, it's, it's what we're looking for and, and when we're selecting those designers and working with those teams. What we've done specifically at these schools, when you first enter the site, again, the improved pedestrian, pedestrian and vehicular access, parking. When you walk up to the building, you will not be able to enter the building. All doors will be locked. You have to go to that main entrance. You have to push the button where someone can hear you talking and see your face and, you know, ask who you are, you know, what, what you're doing there. Once you're allowed in, you can only get into the main office. You're not allowed into those, into the hallway until then you can continue those conversations and, you know, they can further know what you're there for. All of those doors, classroom doors are able to be quickly locked from the inside of the classroom. You have security cameras, you know, throughout the interior and exterior of the building. And those are the same, same features that we're, you know, we're pushing into our existing schools as we're doing renovations and additions.
Let me pick up on something you said that, I know we have the buzz-in systems at all the schools. You push a button and so forth. Well, the Sandy Hook at school also had that system. Have we considered, because the problem there, this guy didn't push the button. He just shot all the glass out. It was in, in a matter of just three or four seconds. Have we considered, I was mentioning superintendent some time back, maybe you've seen the commercial 3M and there may be other companies that, I'm not doing a commercial for 3M, but they make a film that you can put on the glass that you can't even see that it's there. But even though you were to shoot that glass with a semi-automatic weapon, it, bullets will not penetrate. It takes you minutes because there's a, there's a demonstration on, that you can watch on YouTube, with and without, and without, just a matter of seconds, even with that system we're talking about there in the building. But with the film on the glass, is that something we've considered? Because in it, I think of the demonstration that I looked at, it took almost five minutes after. And of course, five minutes is not a real long time, but it's time. You know, you hit the panic button, you lock certain, you know, you go into a lockdown. You, you can protect your children much better than, say, in five seconds when someone comes in. But if we considered that type of protection around the, the entrance where they would go in, that type of film?
We have looked at that in, in the past and it's certainly something, you know, we'll be looking at again.
Okay, because it's, or, or the old-fashioned glass they used to have that had the wire in the middle, remember? Because the whole, the whole point that I keep stressing, whether it be with cameras or things like this, you're buying time. You're buying time to where you can take action to secure your facility and your children.
There is no one magic solution to any of this. You know, whether we're talking, we're talking about the mental health, the training, everything that Dave does, everything that we do together with the building improvements, you know, it has to work together to make our schools safe. It's, it's not one piece individually.
We'll talk just briefly about what we're trying to do with the mental health of our students in our schools and it's quite extensive. And we have at least one student support personnel in every one of our schools and we have more in most, but it depends on the need of the school as to how we assign counselors and social workers to our schools and also with mental health workers. So, but the bottom line is even if the state of North Carolina does not, if we were to give counselors and social workers based on what the state allotted, most of our schools, especially our elementary schools and some of our smaller middle schools, would actually be sharing counselors. They wouldn't have full-time counselors. But because you guys have foresight to understand that we need more than that, we're able to provide at least one full-time student support person, either a counselor or a social worker in every one of our schools, even the small ones. And in our, of course, in our middle and high schools, we have, and in, and in some of our high-need elementary schools, we have much more than one. It just depends on the need. We actually have additional mental health supports in our schools because we have great partnerships, again, with the health department, with the mental health workers that come into our schools. Coastal Horizons is a great partner. We, we use them. We also use some other providers that you see, we get contracts with every year. RHA is one of the ones that you'll see a contract for along with Learning Perspectives. And of course, we have, not only Wilmington Health Access for Teens in our, all of our comprehensive high schools, we have the site-based clinics which have mental health folks there as well. We actually have access for our students to go to the main campus on Oleander Drive. So, we have lots of community support with that as well. I'm going to ask our expert, Ms. Tanya Jordan, to come and brief this slide because she's gonna talk to you about some of the things. I know people have questions about how do we know? This is how we know. Tanya?
Good evening. We have, our student support personnel has training and we had training in October to implement, implement our new student safety protocol. And in that protocol, we rolled out the use of two new tools, which are used not only in New Hanover County, but all over the nation. One of them is the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale and that is used with students who are at risk for suicide. And our counselors and social workers have been trained to use that tool to assess those students. Also, for students who are potentially homicidal, we use the Berkeley Data Collection Form. And using both of those forms, the counselors and social workers ask a series of questions of those students. And from their, their responses and of course, along with their expertise, they decide whether or not those students need additional supports outside of school. Parents, of course, are notified and those students are required to have an evaluation from a licensed mental health professional before they return to school.
Instead of having the opportunity to have that training, shouldn't it be mandatory?
It was mandatory for the counselors and social workers, yes.
It is mandatory?
Yes. And the training that we had in October was mandatory, yes. In addition to that, and we also had our school psychologists were invited to that training as well so that we have many people trained on this, on these methodologies. We asked that when they are implemented, that two student support personnel do those with students together. In addition to that training that we had in October, Trillium has offered to our counselors, social workers and to our entire New Hanover County school teachers as well, youth mental health first aid training. We've had many, most of our counselors and social workers have taken advantage of that training, but Trillium has been gracious in offering that same training to teachers. That training is kind of the back of our hand for counselors and social workers, but that particular training is important for all of us to have as a community of first responders in recognizing those signs and symptoms of a student who may be in distress and the appropriate measures to go to next and helping that child to get the help that they need.
These are our list of things that we require, that we review every year as part of our student support services for our, for our student population, things that are required not only by law, but things that we have, that we feel are important that our staffs in our schools must review every year to make sure that they understand these are supports that are available and are required for our students. And as you can see, that list is quite extensive. They actually have to sign off on that. It comes back to Ms. Jackson's office and we keep those on file. And basically, what we, we're doing is we're holding the schools accountable for making sure that they go over these initiatives each year and we are up to speed with what we're doing. One of the things I want you to make sure you understand is we look at this whole school safety issue as, as also a mental health issue. And we are throwing and doing everything that we can with what we have, with our community resources as well, to make sure that we're identifying and assisting students in our school system that need it.
What is the meth lab product, protocol?
Excuse me?
What is the meth lab protocol?
Well, in, 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 in short, we're teaching our people when they go into, when they go into homes that they, they, that it, what a meth lab may look like so that they don't spend time, don't touch things in the place. But as they get that on them, it, it creates problems for them. So, it pretty much is allowing them to know what to do because our counselors and social workers are the ones making home visits. You know, they're going out into the field and they go into a home, they need to be able to recognize what the signs of a meth lab are. As you know, they don't have signs on the door saying, "This is a meth lab." You walk in and there's certain things that you can see and smell that will indicate that this might be a place where they're cooking meth. And then they have to eradicate themselves from that environment and then we have to go about it in another direction. Do we need to notify law enforcement? Do we need to notify DSS? Tanya, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Just also, we make sure that our personnel that go out for these, these home visits, that they know that before, the first thing that you do is maintain safety by leaving that environment and then contacting their administrator.
Right.
But they're running a meth lab. I don't think that'd exactly invite them in, would they?
Well, you'd be surprised that we get invited into some, some, some really strange situations. And oftentimes, if it's me coming, they probably don't want me to come in. But oftentimes, the school counselor comes, you know, that's a person, that's a helping person and they, a lot of times, they, they gain entry into places that you wouldn't think they would gain entry into because of the trust level.
Dr. Holliday, is it your, is it your position that we don't need additional mental health of support?
I would never tell you that, simply because we need all the help that we can get, but we also understand that there are restraints. We do have some schools...
I know that part, but that's not the issue.
We do, we do have some schools that, on our rubric... We do have some schools that, on our rubric, we're not able to serve them as we might would like to, simply because, based on our rubric score, they don't have the same need that another school has, but it doesn't mean that a need might not jump in there, and they might need it. The mental health supports that we have, oftentimes, from our outside providers, even though they're doing a really good job with us, do require that there be some third-party payment. Either it's either Medicaid, or you heard one of our partners in here tonight, basically saying that, you know, private insurance billing, those kinds of things, because no matter what, even though we are subsidizing it, and you through your foresight are subsidizing some of these programs, it's still a cost, and either somebody's insurance has got to pick up on it, or we have to figure out some way of finding the funding to do it. So, one of the major problems in our society today is mental health, and how broken the mental health system is. And it's getting closer to fixed, I believe, in our public school system than anywhere else, but it's still not what it ought to be. And a lot of it had to do with deregulation coming out of the late 90s, early 2000s, and we're still struggling with that. There are still places that, when students, one of the things that we're finding is difficult with day treatment especially, is once the insurance runs out, then the student has to go back to their regular school, or has, we have to have some place for them to go. J.C. Rose is a help, and our transition program is a help. But when the funding runs out, when the insurance money runs out, it doesn't necessarily mean that the child's cured. And if there's no funding stream for that, and they no longer qualify under the DSM, DSM six now, it's still DSM five, okay? I won't get ahead and say DSM six, but the DSM five, which lists the mental health diagnosis and what we qualify for, leaves a lot of holes oftentimes. And I don't know that we can throw enough money at it, but certainly, additional mental health workers is not going to hurt us, but again, we would have to be very purposeful as to where we put them.
I think what you heard the other day from Chairman White was that he, again, recognized the value of mental health counseling, and even suggested that there may possibly, from the county, be funding to help us provide more mental health counseling in the schools.
We're all for that. I mean, and, again, you've heard me come and advocate when we started putting the Health Department folks in our schools, and how that has made such a difference. But again, that's not enough, so we go out and our community partners, Coastal Horizons, Trillium, the private providers, also, if we didn't have them, we couldn't do it either. So, it truly does take this village to raise our children in that respect, because it takes all of us working together to make this broken mental health system work for our children. And I want you to understand, we do, I want to underscore what Tanya just said about the assessment tools for suicide and for homicidal students. You wouldn't have thought 20 years ago we would have to do that necessarily, but these are critical tools that our folks are trained to use. And if the student indicates through either one of these assessments that there is an issue, they've got to go get assessed before they come back. We've been very, we've been very strict about that. And I'm on the phone with principals consistently about it. Tanya's on the phone with her colleagues and her folks in her buildings about it, and we're making sure that these tools are used, and if a student behaves or does something in a certain way, or issues some kind of threat, before they come back to school, they've got to have some sort of mental health assessment. And someone with a mental health credential is going to have to say, "This child is not a danger to himself or to others." And we've been pretty consistent with that. I've just listed here, and our team has just listed here, some of the things that are potential warning signs. This is up, you can take a look at this, but a lot of these are fairly well-known. It's not always a threat. You know, sometimes a teacher reads something that a child has written as part of an assignment that's a cry for help, change in behavior, giving away their favorite stuff, all those kinds of things that they're trained to look for, not just a child issuing a threat. Basically, we've listed here what we would do, and I pretty much outlined how we would do it, some of these after we do the assessment would be not only a mental health, but a DSS or a law enforcement referral, and as always, we've got the parents involved. Pretty much outlined what has to happen before they come back to school. We've kind of ran through this kind of hurriedly. We've blown past nine o'clock interpolation. Any questions you might have for us? Questions?
I do. Just kind of summarizing everything, I know we've done a bunch of slides, but since the issue of school security started two and a half weeks ago, have we done any, have we found anything in reviewing our procedures that we've modified moving forward? And a second part of the question is, directly, what do we need to do to become more safe? I think mental health providers, I think we've talked about, the county is working with us there, but I know we have some issues at some of our schools, whether it be New Hanover with multiple access points, Market Street that has a fence in the middle that we can't get access to, George West Building, as opposed to the main campus. What kind of things do we need to do to address specific schools?
Yes, sir. The first part of your question, we've made lots of changes as we've gone through over the past two decades, as we began to develop this. We continually modify as we run into issues. We've made our campuses, and like Eddie was talking about, how we design our schools and our campuses are much different than we were doing them 20 years ago. So just a basic outline and the design. And I remember the first time I walked into Castle Hayne Elementary School after it was built, and you walk into that vestibule area, I mean, that was something that I wasn't used to, and I'd been in schools all my life, and you walk in and you're essentially in a capture zone. And those are things that you would have never thought about in a school. In fact, I used to talk, Ms. Nichols talked about inviting schools, and how inviting, I got your name right that time, inviting schools, and how inviting the schools were. But a lot of the things, when you see them today, 20 years ago, you would have thought, "This is not very inviting." And, but it's for safety reasons. I buzz into a school now, and most people, for good or for bad, know who I am. But I buzz into a school, and I will always get, "May I help you?", as opposed to, "Come on in, Dr. Holliday, just come on in, may I help you?" And I say, "I'm Dr. Holliday, I'm here to see the principal." Fine, come in. They all know they've got that protocol, they've got the file. And, like, I mean, I never thought we'd be walking around with stickers on. I mean, but you walk around, every school you go into, you've got to have that visitors' badge, unless you have an employee badge, and you've got to be there and state your purposes as to why you're there. So those are those kinds of things. Now, as far as making our schools more secure, those campuses you're talking about, we're exploring and what we need to do, and in fact, I think we've got some ideas as to how to move forward on how to make those buildings, those separate buildings, more secure. In other words, how can we lock those remotely? In other words, if you need to lock that building remotely, even though that, you can't lock the door between class changes because the kids have to get from here to there, but you can't, but can we lock those doors during the class change? And you'd have to go in and either badge into the building, or you'd have to have a key to get in the building, because it's going to be locked from the outside before you go in. And we think if we can get that done, we can make those campuses much more secure. We've also talked to our colleagues around the state, because as you well know, that's not a problem, that's just to New Hanover County. Most high schools that have been built prior to the last 20 years are multiple-building campuses. In fact, they used to advertise, you know, "We have, this is our science building, this is our history building," the big high schools. And if you're building a high school now, you build it like, in a lot of ways, like we built Ashland, or you build it in a place where you walk into an area, and you've got your office and your common area here, and everything else emanates out from the common area. But you only have that one entrance point. You go to, like, Bladen County, and you walk into West Bladen High School, it's kind of a miniature Green Hope High School, like in Raleigh, where they, you walk in, and you've got the gym here, you've got an auditorium here, you've got your office complex here, you've got your cafeteria here, you've got a common area here, and your classroom wings come off from it. Those are the kinds of things, if we were building a high school today, that's how we built it. We've got three high schools that weren't built that way. We've got to figure out a way to make sure those exterior doors are locked when they need to be locked. But then you have the situation where, what do you do during class change? Because for a class change, you're going to be moving between the building, you really don't have any way not to do that, unless we can figure out a way to connect all the buildings. Of course, as you know, that would probably require a bond referendum, and we'd have to look at some really unique architectural designs, because I'm not sure in some cases we would necessarily be able to do that.
Specifically, we've talked to our principals about ensuring they've got more adults out during class changes. We've asked our principals that, after a class change, to go and check doors that are supposed to be locked, to make sure that they're locked. We have schools that have a problem called watchdog, which is dads are grade students, that's not, that puts extra eyes and ears at some of our schools in those programs. So it's a conversation with our principals to know their buildings, to use their folks, to make sure they're out and about, invisible during those critical class change times, and then check doors after that as well. Mr. Charms' example, she's held meetings all this week with her students, and we've asked all of our middle school and high school principals to have conversations with their students about what's going on, about if you see something, say something, as well as just reviewing their current safety practices at their school.
And I think that's what I was getting to, and I may have misspoke about two decades, but, you know, we as a board, and I know we've gotten a lot of emails and a lot of feedback from parents, but you don't want to say this, but you look at what happened at Parkland, and it's an opportunity for us to review our safety procedures, but not only review our safety procedures, but to implement stuff, like, for example, I think what Dr. Mark was talking about with the principals. And I just want to make sure that we're identifying the fact that we have safe schools, we have mental health professionals, but we also need to focus on maybe some areas that we're lacking in, and figure out ways to improve those, and that's what I want to make sure that we're focused on as well.
I can assure you that, over the past several weeks, personally, I haven't thought about much else.
Right. I know, and then that's obviously topic number one.
Right.
Our kids' safety, I mean, you go to school and you expect them to be a safe haven where they can learn, and obviously, making sure that...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Dr. Holliday, I don't know if I misunderstood something, but I know in the elementaries and middles, you know, the card swipes, the, you know, all the exit doors and so forth, I know the high schools, where there's a problem, but is there a locking device, a mechanism, because I'm not into a lot of these apps and things like that with all this technology today, but is there a locking mechanism that could be put on doors, like says, like New Hanover, but all the various doors on, or any school, really? Whereas, from the main office, you hit a button and you lock every one of those doors, and then, like you say, with a class change, they're open, they would be open for the class change, and once that class change occurs, you hit a button and they automatically will lock back. I mean, is that...
That's what we're looking at installing at those three schools.
So they are available.
Exactly what you described, being able to lock the doors, one location, and being able to release them, and even a timed release in certain cases.
Mr. Anderson's pricing those systems, so as we get closer to our budget recommendation, that'll be one of the ones that you will see.
Dr. Mark, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say that, I guess it's something you could put on, but you could still use another type, but just when you wanted to use that, you could, which would probably all the time when schools in session, to make sure all your exterior doors are locked.
Yeah, that is what we're looking for, yes, sir.
So many times in schools, even though it's locked, a student on the inside can open it to someone on the outside, which kind of gets around that, with a device like that, and you couldn't do that.
Yes, sir.
The board is very concerned, as we always have been regarding safety, but I'm also concerned about the threats from students, and it doesn't seem like it is abating in any way. We still continue to have these continuous threats from students, and obviously, we must not be punishing them severely enough, because it's not a deterrent from students making the threats. Do you have any suggestions on what we can do? Because that takes up manpower, that takes up, that removes the focus from education, and it frightens parents.
We work very closely on every threat with law enforcement. To date, they've charged seven of our students with either misdemeanors or felonies, which carry serious consequences. It's not a phenomenon that's unique to us. We belong to a group called the Large District Consortium, and it's, we're seeing that in all the districts across the state, and you saw it after Columbine, is these rash of folks making these kinds of things. And so I appreciate that partnership we have with law enforcement. They are right there immediately investigating and determining the severity of this. Unfortunately, you'll have hearings over the next month or so, based on a lot of the actions that have taken place with the students this week. We did a meeting today with the district attorney, and we talked about the need for parents to have conversations with their students, and talking about what happens when you make a threat, even though it's not a serious, even though it's not a valid threat, it has consequences for what happens to that child.
I had a talk with my daughter about my grandson, who's in first grade, telling her, "You need to sit down and talk to him, and explain to him, you don't talk about guns, you don't do it because you can get in trouble, you can get into a lot of trouble, and he might think that he's just fooling around, but it has serious consequences." But I don't know if the consequences are serious enough, since we continue to have the problem.
This is a, it's a national problem, though, I mean, it's happening in every jurisdiction.
I know that.
The consequences are multifold. We have students who are going to be expelled from school, we have students who are going to carry criminal charges with them through their juvenile, rest of their juvenile career, some of them, if they're sixteen or older, are going to carry those into their adult records. We also have to, I think, one thing we do have to do is look at how we teach what I call digital citizenship, because a lot of these things are social media, where somebody posts something, and all of a sudden, five minutes later, 300 other people have that piece. That's an aspect to this that wasn't here in the Columbine days. And so while we do, we teach digital citizenship to our students at various levels, we're going to have to review what we're doing and dig deeper into that. I know, like I said, when Sharon was meeting with her students today, this week, that's one of the things she's talking about. Our kids have become so attached to their phones, but our parents have to be able to access their child's phone. Their children don't have a right to a phone, it's a privilege that a parent grants to that child. And Ben David talks about a starfish community, and one aspect of that starfish is education, but another aspect is family. Our families have a responsibility to educate their children about what's right and what's behavior-wise.
Like me having a conversation with my daughter and grandson.
So there's not one solution that's going to fix every child, it's a multifaceted approach, and you can't punish every... approach, and you can't punish every kid the same way because not every incident is the same. If there's a mental health aspect to what that child's doing, punishing them in a legal consequence isn't going to help that child adjust their behavior. So we, you've got to look at every situation individually. And like I said, we're blessed with some great law enforcement folks, and they have spent a lot of time in this last two weeks investigating these, and out of forty incidences, they found seven that they thought warranted further action in terms of the legal system. And there are some of those that you'll deal with in terms of further action with school consequences. So to say there's, that there's a punishment that's going to fix this, it's, it's not that clear cut. You've got to deal with each individual child, each individual case, and find the appropriate punishment for that particular child in that incident. I wish there was an easy answer, but there isn't.
I agree.
Any other questions?
I do want to point out, in case people should know, we're spending forty million dollars to make two schools a lot safer than they were beforehand, building, we're building Blair and College Park, so we are taking action, we recognize the need for safety, and we are trying to address that need. All right.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible I have another short break?
Uh, I think we're going to be able to go through most of the stuff fairly quickly.
Okay.
You're an, you're an optimist.
Well, I don't know. I mean, superintendent's report, you got anything to report?
No.
All right, that takes care of that. All right, consensus side is personnel, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, we recommend the board approve Personnel Matters as presented.
Move.
Say.
Got a motion in a second, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, budget amendments, Appendix K, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board's approval of the amendments as presented.
Move for approval.
Have you talked about what's in it, please?
I got a motion in a second, say what.
Mr. Shells asking some questions. I'd like a brief explanation of what's in it.
Certainly, there are several amendments presented from the state, general, federal, other restricted revenue and capital outlay funds, and capital outlay specifically, we are transferring some funds from some project savings to mobile classroom replacements, because I think the bids came in a little higher than anticipated there. We also, probably the most significant dollar amount is increased appropriation for charter school funding. That was just an error on my part in the, earlier in the year when we were trying to make sure the funding was balanced, there was a prior year fund balance appropriation that I needed to continue into the current year that I did, and so that's just a correction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, a change of school assignment, Appendix L, Dr. Holliday.
Recommend you approve.
Move for approval.
Have a motion in a second, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All business. Policy for second reading, new policy board appointments, Ms. Nichols.
We discussed this thoroughly at the last meeting, as well as during the retreat, so I ask for approval of the policy that addresses how the board will choose members of the Board of Trustees for Cape Fear Community College.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I think we, after the last meeting, I think Mr. Bullard made some calls and made some changes to the, to the policy, correct?
Correct.
And those were regarding the voting rights of board members not attending the meeting, is that correct?
That's right.
We, what did we conclude with, with that?
The board cannot prohibit a board member from voting on any particular candidate. I think the previous draft suggested that if a board member did not attend the interviews of the candidates, then the board member could not then vote on the candidate. So I did some research on that and checked with some experts at the UNC School of Government, and concluded that, 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 that the board does not have the power to set restrictions on when another board member can and cannot vote, and therefore I modified that to say that all board members are highly encouraged to attend the scheduled interviews in person before voting. Also, I will note that the policy says that the vote on the candidates will take place immediately following the last interview, so the ones that aren't at the interview most likely would not be present to vote.
So they could not come back and demand the right to vote later?
No, the vote, the policy says the vote will take place right then, so-
That's okay.
Once the vote occurs, then it's final. I mean, the majority of the board could, in theory, revoke the vote at some later time, but I think that's highly unlikely.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, next item, DC Virgo Advisory Board Department, Appendix N, myself. The board met, what, two, three months ago, had interviews for an appointment to the DC Virgo Advisory Board. As a result of that, the panel voted for Dr. Aquinetta Wheeler to be appointed to the DC Virgo Advisory Board, so I am asking for a motion that we appoint Dr. Aquinetta Wheeler to that board.
Move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda is the Lab School, Appendix O, Dr. Markley.
Putting these, the item just before that with this one makes sense because the advisory board's going to play a key role in what happens as we move forward with this item. I have with us Dr. Van Dempsey from the UNCW. He's going to give you a brief presentation on our plan for what's being, what's known generally as the Lab School, is how I think it's the shorthand version is. But the state legislature, two years ago, requested that schools of education create what are called Lab Schools. And Lab Schools are, are, there's charter-like schools with the university. And we have an opportunity tonight to create a unique partnership that I think will benefit the students of New Hanover County. This partnership brings together the university, which provides the training for a good number of the teachers who are in our system, as well as a lot of our principals, and, and creates an experience, an opportunity for them to provide services to students through the, different schools of the university, and enhance not only the, I think, the education of the students, but also the community in which DC Virgo is located. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Van Dempsey briefly, and then I'll, if we have questions, we'll be happy to answer those questions. You'll have two items tonight. One is approving the Lab School MOU, and that needs to be item one. Once you, if you decide to do that, then you have a second item, that is the lease of the building, which is now DC Virgo, to the university to hold that Lab School.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. This may be the briefest presentation I've ever done in my higher ed career. I'll, I'll go through it as briskly as I can, and please let me know if you have questions. Let me introduce Jessica Swinski, who's behind me right here. She is the coordinator between the university and DC Virgo, helping to lead the initiative with Virgo. I want to thank the board, Mr. Higgins, for the support, the collaboration, the cooperation that the university has seen in this process. Also, Dr. Markley and his staff for the help and the support they've given. Also, DC Virgo and the community, it's just been an outstanding relationship and process so far, and at the university, we're thankful to all these groups for the collaboration and the work that's been done. I also want to say it is our intention that we will keep the advisory board that you just mentioned, we see that as an important part of this work, and we want to continue to maintain that relationship. As the superintendent said, the basic focus of the initiative at DC Virgo and across all of the settings in North Carolina are to improve the outcomes of KA students in low-performing settings, number one. Number two, to strengthen the education of teachers and the preparation of teachers who go out into North Carolina schools. And number three, to strengthen principal preparation for people who will be school leaders in school districts and school settings. Operating details of the initiative with Virgo, obviously the New Hanover County Schools are our district partner. The school as being designed will be a kindergarten through eighth grade school. It has a projected enrollment of two hundred and seventy. It'll continue to operate on a year-round schedule with an opening day of July eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and every day we think about this, that each day goes faster, getting close to that opening. According to the MOA, by statute, the New Hanover County Schools will provide transportation and will provide child nutrition services. Part of the agreement is to allow DC Virgo students, student groups, and athletic teams to participate in competitions held by the New Hanover County Schools as representatives of Virgo, and competitions between DC Virgo student teams and New Hanover County School student teams, as DC Virgo might request. Allow DC Virgo teachers, professional staff, and principals access to relevant professional development events and training that go on within the district, to outline requirements for communication and reporting between the two parties, and to incorporate the lease agreement that the superintendent just mentioned. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The transportation and food, we are reimbursed for that, correct?
Yes, well, we were, specifically the state will give the transportation funds directly to us. The mechanics on, on the child nutrition, we're still working out with the folks up in, in Raleigh what that will exactly will look like.
Dr. Dempsey, you mentioned that there is, your anticipated enrollment is two hundred and seventy, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have an idea how, how that's going to be broken down between elementary students and middle, middle school students?
Kindergarten through fifth, twenty, in a classroom, at the middle grades, level fifty, at grade level. Did I just say that correctly?
Would you anticipate, I guess, in the beginning, more middle school students there because you're, in essence, taking over a middle school?
Well, the plan is that we would hold, the enrollment would be stable as to what it is now, which I think is one fifty, one fifty-two, and then we would bring in the twenty at grade level behind them.
Do the teachers that are there now have to make applications, just remain at the Lab School?
Yes, anybody who would be on the faculty when the school opens has to apply to be there, and they're applying to the university as part of the structure.
Thank you.
Can we believe we have enough vacancies typically in a year that if for some reason they don't want to go to the Lab School, we can absorb them into our current vacancies?
Well, they also get a one-year leave of absence that would allow them to come back if they did it for one year and then decided it wasn't for them.
Correct.
That's right.
This is a, a five-year process, correct? What statute's, it's five years?
Five years.
Then what happens at the end of five years?
We're tremendous success, and we renew for another five.
And if it's not a tremendous success, what happens in five years?
We get the building back, I can't speak for the school, Mark.
Yeah, well, the, the building reverts back to the county, we, the university then withdraws from the, the agreement within.
I, I knew that, I just thought the community should hear that, and we're here discussing this in public, but thank you.
One last question, Dr. Dempsey, I know you and I talked a little bit about, in a way, it's almost unfortunate that we're, the statute is mandating that we are now cooperating together to build a Lab School.
Yes.
We have a great institution, UNCW, we have a great school system, hopefully, or it should have happened earlier. So how, how can, if we do have successes through the Lab School, I, I think my understanding is you have a Lab School, you have some access to some summer programs for UNCW's three students, do you see the potential for expanding not only, not necessarily the Lab School, but expanding the programs into some of these other under, underprivileged schools, whether it be Title I schools that we have, or can we, do you anticipate, or have you discussed developing further relationships if they are successful?
I, I would think as over time, as we see practices that are successful at Virgo, that the university's doing in collaboration at the site, we would begin to, the, the district might be interested in how can we take those, transport those to other schools. My, to your question about what happens in the future, I would hope we start having other school districts who want to come in and see what's going on, and we have school districts who are asking, how did you set this up, and, and how did you create the success you have? And at the end of that five years, assuming we're successful, we start talking about how to transport this to other places, how do we take this model and, and make it work in other settings?
And the collaboration between, again, you and I talked about this, but can you tell the public how you and Dr. Markley, or, or UNCW and the superintendent's office are going to communicate successes or failures?
There's a couple of ways. When the state created charter schools, the, the idea for charter schools in some respects was to create ideas that could come back to public schools. I think there's an adversarial relationship between charters and public that sometimes prohibit that. You see both of us standing here together today that you don't typically see in, in this kind of relationship. They're going to have access to our professional development, they're going, their principal, when they hire that person, will, will participate in our, our activities, so they'll be there to share those ideas back and forth. A lot of the folks that we hire, as I said, come out of UNCW, so if, if a Lab School is, is training principals in a high-poverty environment, hopefully I can hire that principal if I've got a vacancy in one of our high-poverty schools. The dean and I are, are in regular communications. There isn't that adversarial some, relationship you sometimes see between public and charter schools. So I think the ideas that they come up with, as we, as we're doing this, we can share across the board. Additionally, by statute, I have to serve on his board of directors, or with-
Correct, that's right.
So it, it's a case of we're actively involved in what they're doing, so we'll see what's going on in those schools, and we can pull those ideas back into, into our system.
Could you also describe for the benefit of the community how the School of Education fits into the Lab School, the benefits to the Lab School of the UNCW Education Department?
Sure, I, I do want to add one more point to your question. I've spent more time with Dr. Markley in the last ninety days than I have members of my own faculty. I don't know that he would say he's better for it, but we certainly have spent a lot of time together, working through questions and issues and, and the collaborative relationship. One of the things we've talked about in several of the meetings related to the work at Virgo, including with the community, is what can we learn as teacher educators, principal educators, through the relationship with the school and with the community, about how we can do a better job and understand how to, in a better way, educate teachers and educate principals? So we know we have a lot to learn from the intensiveness of that relationship with the community, with community agencies and groups, some of the things we're talking about with the wraparound model, the closeness of the relationship between what the faculty at the university are doing with the folks who were at Virgo. So we, I, everything I know about school/university partnerships tells me, we will get better at what we're doing at the university because of, of what we're going to learn through the process at Virgo.
I thought what you would also say is that your students have the ability to work in the school.
Well, absolutely, that's the-
That's what I wanted the community to hear, is you've got the resources of UNCW as a training ground in the school system.
Yes, we educate teachers to work in schools and work in communities, and they're going to understand that relationship and why it's important in ways that are highly beneficial to the students and to us at the university.
Thank you. Will, will next year be the first year for these Lab Schools around the state?
It'll be the third, uh, second year for East Carolina and Western, or this year is the-
Second year for East Carolina and Western Carolina?
First year.
But both of those are, are different in terms of they're a, a classroom within a school kind of model. I believe this will be the first full school Lab School.
Yeah, the first two, East Carolina and Western, are what's called schools within schools. This year's-
Are they on their campus or in another school?
It's in a school.
An existing public school?
It's in an existing school.
Okay.
This year, we're seeing the model that we're using, which is to have a whole school approach to the relationship. And we will be, we will be among three that are doing it for the first year.
I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mr. Matt Clark, who was a former teacher at Virgo, former middle school teacher of the year, and who's been a critical part of helping transition from this through the advisory board, and now working to help make this Lab School possible.
She's a little citizen extraordinaire.
Dr. Markley, I want to ask a quick question. Since the rental of the building was not on the agenda, all you have is, you just speak of the Lab School, and we're being asked to adopt the memorandum of understanding, should that not therefore include the rental as part of that motion? Should that not therefore include the rental as part of that motion?
I leave that to how the board wants to present.
Well, I think that would be the better way, since we approved an agenda that did not contain the rental by itself. Is that all, has all that been worked out?
I would, both the MOA and the lease, you've had copies of since Thursday. They both were posted on the board agenda. Mr. Bull, I'll yield to you in terms of how that motion should look.
It's up to the board. You could vote on the MOA and the lease separately, or you could vote on them together. But I did want to point out that what you have attached are two different versions of the MOA. The one that has some red line changes in paragraph Roman numeral one, section I, is the more current one, which I think is the second one that you'll get to in your attachment. The reason for that change was just to provide a little clarification on what property we were leaving at the building and what we were taking with us before we turn it over to UNCW. So my recommendation would be if you're going to vote on, that you clarify in your motion that you are voting on the version that has that change that I just mentioned.
And that change was vetted by both parties.
Well, I'd make a motion to vote on the red line version of the memorandum of agreement.
Could you say again what that consists of?
And not include the lease.
Well, the lease is actually within the memorandum of...
Oh, it is, okay. I can't, I mean, keep going past me, I can't.
She's trying to help us.
I know, but it just...
Mr. Hayes, it's a simple one. We just clarified in terms of delineating what's staying in the building and what's going. So it was a one-line change from the original.
But is there a lease amount in there?
Yes, the lease, the lease amount is approximately sixteen thousand dollars. There's also some money that passes through the county for building maintenance that stays with us as well.
Is the lease of trasse coliseum any part of that?
Yeah, I know you're waiting to hear that.
The sixteen thousand number, yes, actually corresponds very closely to our cost for leasing trasse.
Is that sixteen thousand per year?
Yes.
But I know in the past, when we were approached by charter school people, it was going to be so much per square foot.
But we also, there's also a large amount that we're keeping from the county for building maintenance as well that's outlined in the lease, I believe it's approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So you have a lease amount that we're getting in terms of lease. And then there are some facility dollars that we get on a per pupil basis from the county that remain with us. Mary Diesel, is that about eighty, about eight thousand dollars?
Do we want to tie anything in here that in the event, what we pay the university for trasse goes up? That our lease goes up?
That's actually a line in the lease.
Okay.
I would just like to say, I mean, I think it is an opportunity. It's something, obviously, that has been successful in some other places. We're, y'all are required to do it. It seems like this is the logical place. And the more opportunities we have, I think, the better. So I certainly wish you success.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the memorandum, including the rent. Any further discussion?
Mr. Higgins, do you mean including the lease?
The lease.
Lease agreement.
Lease, correct.
Well, the lease, the rent, I mean, that was the big thing, is that... Are you suggesting there's a separate contract?
I think it would probably be better to do them separately. Even though the lease is going to be attached to the MOA, it would probably make more sense for the board to vote on the MOA.
Wish somebody brought that up and we approved the agenda. I'm not sure exactly at this point in time, we are, you know...
Well, I think, both of them were attached, yeah, both of them were attached together. I think we can separate them.
Well, either we vote for both of them.
I think it would be more clear if you separated them and voted on them separately, yes.
I would make a motion to first vote on the memorandum of agreement.
Are we starting all over again? I second it then.
We are.
All right, you have, we have a motion to vote on the memorandum of agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
I move that we accept the lease.
The lease agreement that's attached to the memorandum of agreement.
All right, I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say something to you folks. I, I don't know how in the world we scheduled for you folks to have to wait so long for your item to come up. Clearly, we've got to do a better job of that. And my apologies and I appreciate your patience.
Well, I think it gives a good insight as to what goes on. It's very educational, I would think, to see what goes on at school board meetings and so forth. So then, since we're going to be sharing so much, we may as a...
You all to the next board of trustees meeting at the University of North Carolina Wilmington?
All right, next item on the agenda, new business audit contract, Cherry Beckett, LLP, Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the board's approval of this audit contract. This is year four of a five-year agreement, and the total is fifty-five thousand dollars.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it. What was the amount?
Fifty-five thousand.
All right, I have a motion, second. Any discussion?
This is the same group that did audit services last year?
Yes, we did a five-year request or proposal, and this will be the fourth year.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
May I ask a question about the next item? Should we add C-Tech to it?
No, because they already have the option to play sports.
They do, okay.
Item, item B, granting students from Isaac Bear Early College High School and Wilmington Early College High School the opportunity to play sports. Dr. Markley.
We've had requests from parents and students, and they've come to you over time, to allow students at these two schools to play sports. What I would ask for tonight is if this is something the board wants to do, is that you approve it and then allow Dr. Holliday to work with both of those schools, to work out procedures, and come back to you with a recommendation of how to implement your vote tonight.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
All right, Derek, so just so you're clear, he'll make the recommendation that will take effect next year, is what it would be for next year, not this year?
That's something that we discussed at the retreat.
Yes, this is a...
And we had talked about maybe, was it giving him two options? Is that correct?
That's what I want you to go back to the school and talk to the parents and the staff about those two options. So I want to make sure we hear from the folks it's going to directly impact.
It'll be their school, their home-based school, or the nearest, I think, were the two options.
Those are the, those are the two most likely options.
I thought it was going to be, well, my understanding was it was going to be the school nearest. In other words, Isaac Bear would go to Hoggard.
Now, I heard, that was one of the things we discussed, but I heard it both ways. So I'd rather, I'd rather hear directly from the parents, can't switch around.
That's fine, that's fine.
You choose, you choose.
All right, next item, student assignments from DC Virgo to Holly Shelter Middle School. Appendix R, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your approval of the lab school tonight, we now need to address the current student attendance zone for Virgo. Our recommendation tonight is that the current attendance zone in its entirety be assigned from DC Virgo to Holly Shelter Middle School.
Move for approval.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, if you don't want to.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, the closest middle school to Virgo is Williston. We've heard from a lot of families, whether it be through the open choice packets, hardships, or appeals, that they would want their children to go to Williston just because it's kind of, you know, it's centrally located. Why, why would we send them to Holly Shelter?
Well, the current school capacity at Holly Shelter is nine hundred and eighteen. The actual membership this year is six hundred and thirty-seven. So we're actually under our building capacity and we have the space available.
And that's a short, that's a short-term solution for the capacities. The problem is...
When, as we, as during the lab presentation, they're looking at a membership at DC Virgo of two hundred and seventy. We don't anticipate, we anticipate most of these students will actually be attending the lab school. But if they don't want to go to the lab school, we have space available for them and would provide transportation as well for them to go to Holly Shelter.
Williston's under two, correct?
I didn't bring, I don't know what the Williston numbers...
I think it was around fifty the last time I looked.
Fifty under, below.
About fifty below.
So it just, I mean, it makes sense to me because, again, maintaining that neighborhood school philosophy that we would, I think Williston maybe is less than two miles from Virgo, and Holly Shelter is in maybe eight, nine miles away. And again, I haven't done the exact numbers. But it just makes sense to me why, it doesn't make sense to me why we would put those, send those, whatever small amount to Holly Shelter when we could put it at Williston. Even though we have capacity at Holly Shelter, we have capacity at Williston. And then when we get to the middle school maps, you know, you have that, that capacity available at Holly Shelter. Just, I don't know. To me, it makes more sense that you send those children to Williston.
Do you all make an amended motion to send them to Williston instead?
Well, I'd like, I certainly can. I'd just like to have the discussion, get what everyone else is feeling. Because we did sit in those hearings in June, and a lot of people came to us and said, I would rather my child not go to Virgo and want them to go to Williston.
But you had, say, a hundred and, I don't know, say a hundred. Or we could just give them a choice, Welliston or Holly Shelter. But if, say, if a hundred did it, then you're going to overload Williston, even though it's closer.
And you know that number's relative, you know, over capacity or not. I just, I feel like that neighborhood, from what we've heard from them, would rather go to Williston instead of Holly Shelter. I, go ahead, sorry.
If we were to give them a choice, as Mr. Hayes mentioned, then if they're assigned to Holly Shelter, transportation is provided. If they choose to go to Williston, then that's not their assigned school.
And it would not be...
Then they have to provide their own transportation?
Mm-hmm.
Or are we saying that either choice, they will have transportation? That's something that we have to clarify.
Let me, and that's a great point, but let me ask, is there, would there be an issue, Dr. Markley and Mr. Anderson, if we were to move those children to Williston instead of Holly Shelter? What issues would you all say?
I don't think there'll be a big issue. I think there is currently, you know, there's two hundred and five, two hundred and five students in the Virgo District. And, you know, I think that a large major, a large portion of those students will actually go to the lab school. So the impact is certainly not going to be two hundred students regardless. And to address Ms. Nichols' concern, perhaps if we assign them to Williston and they want to go to Holly Shelter, that's a school you have the capacity. So I really don't think it's going to make a big impact either way.
Well, then I would make an amended motion to re-district, the Virgo District to Williston.
I second it.
Okay. I have a amended motion to re-district the Virgo District to Williston. Any discussion?
My man, thank you.
Williston, Virgo goes to Williston instead of Virgo going to Holly Shelter.
No, I was thinking about making an amended motion that would just allow the parents' choice. If they, you know, Williston or...
But then they got to transport them. Then they're going to have to transport them.
To Holly Shelter.
Well, I'm just thinking about if you did have a hundred and, I mean, I don't know how successful. I hope the lab school's very successful, but if it's not, then that's okay, go ahead. That's fine.
I see where you're coming from. I just think...
We'll see, I mean...
Well, I mean, you know, you look at the thing, it says there's two hundred and five students in the Virgo District, but only a hundred and forty go to Virgo.
That's the fifth graders upcoming, you got that, that's that bubble in fifth grade.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
All right, so, hearing no further discussion, we're voting on the amended motion.
Which would be to...
To go to Williston instead of Virgo. All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, so therefore that has become the amended motion. I guess we still have to vote on...
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of the motion as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are going to Williston. All right. All right, next item on the agenda, consideration of construction management for risk agreement for the following projects, Noble Middle School renovation, Trasse Middle School renovation, Riceville Beach Elementary School addition and renovation. Appendix S, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The renovations at Noble Middle and Trasse Middle, as well as the renovations and additions at Riceville Beach Elementary School, these projects are included in the 2014 bond program. On, in February of this year, the board selected the CM at risk, or construction management at risk firms. Montieth Construction Corporation for Noble Middle School and Trasse Middle School, I'm sorry, Barn Hill Contracting Company for Trasse Middle School and Montieth Construction Corporation for Riceville Beach Elementary School. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of the construction management at risk agreements for these three schools. The renovations at Noble and Trasse generally consist of interior renovations to update the school and making major improvements to the building infrastructure. We'll be doing the same at Riceville Beach Elementary. But in addition to that, we'll be adding additional classroom space. Once these projects are bid, we'll be bringing you a change order to award the actual construction portion of the agreement.
Mr. Anderson, how is this going to affect capacity issues at Noble next year?
Well, there's nothing in the project at Noble or Trasse that will change the capacity. You know, so at the completion of the project, you know, their capacity is going to be the same as what it is currently.
How about during the...
The impact is going to be during the project.
Right.
Because we're going, at both these schools, just like Roland Grice and Myrtle Grove, we're obviously going to be displacing students during construction and bringing in modular buildings to accommodate them during that time.
Currently Noble is, how many over? Three hundred, four hundred students, something like that?
I think the projection is they're going to be at three hundred over.
Would it be, so this construction, have you budgeted for adding those additional modular units? At Noble?
We do have, we have modular units included in these budgets to accommodate students during construction.
But we've also talked about the middle school redistricting and hopefully being able to balance those redistricting projects with the construction projects, correct?
That's correct.
And your hope would be that that would alleviate some of the additional crowding at Noble? Would that save money, ultimately save the school system money by not having those additional modular units?
Well, I think if we, if we didn't redistrict, then we would need to look at potentially leaving some of those modular units at Noble. After construction.
Is there a time when you would need to know? Is it something like you can plan for six months in the future for the modular units? Moving modular units? Or how soon would you need to know a redistricting time or map to address those? To address the modular units or the capacity issues that you would have at Noble?
Well, we would be bringing, we would be, we would be bringing those modular buildings in in a little over a year from now.
Okay.
So, yeah, I would say we would need to know, you know, within, you know, within that, the next six months.
All right, I think we have a motion. No, we don't, okay, I need a motion.
Need for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, wired area network contract, Ms. Brinson.
Yes, before I ask you to approve it, I'd like to, on page seven, where they have the quantities under table A1, there are... there are some changes that we're making there that actually is going to make it a little bit less than what it is now. So I'd like to ask you to approve it. The total cost will be under the three hundred and ninety thousand annually, so that will be the max that it'll be. So I would ask for you to approve it, knowing that there's going to be a few little changes making those numbers less.
Move for approval. Second.
Is that with modifications? Is that with modifications?
Yes.
Okay. And your second's with modification. All right, we have a motion to accept it with the modifications. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, June, June summer school proposal, Appendix U, Ms. Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. The Department of Public Instruction allows school districts to offer the opportunity for summer school for students in grades three through eight in the areas of mathematics and English Language Arts. Our recommendation is to provide students in grades three through eight additional instruction with the opportunity for them to demonstrate proficiency on the end of grade assessments. It would be for students who have scheduled, who, excuse me, who have scored level two on the regular administration of the assessment. Students would be, receive instruction June first through June eighth by classroom teachers already employed. Those teachers, that would be teachers at their schools. And then they would be assessed during the workdays on June eleventh and June twelfth. We estimate that this would potentially impact about fourteen hundred elementary school students and nineteen hundred middle school students. Parents would have to give their permission for their students to be reassessed.
Miss Approval.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? I have a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, item G, scholarship recipients. This is the school system scholarship, the seven thousand dollars a year for a four-year scholarship. We met today and interviewed prospective students, and the panel has decided and awarded scholarships to the following people. Ramirez Santiago, Beebe Roberts, Tyler Gibson, Tatiana Afferman.
Congratulations.
Do I hear a motion that we accept all those?
So moved.
So moved. I don't know that we clarified that these are scholarships for candidates to become a teacher that will come back to our system and teach.
Okay. I mean, it's a school board scholarship.
But you said school system, so we.
Well, it is a school system scholarship, yes.
But we didn't give the purpose.
Well, okay, I mean, the fact is that this is a scholarship slash loan that in return for us paying seven thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars a semester, seven thousand dollars a year, for an individual to get a degree in education, they are to return to the New Hanover County school system, and they have to teach for four years out of seven to pay off the, the debt.
Correct.
Otherwise, they are, they will be expected to repay whatever money for the years they did not teach. All right, did we vote?
No.
Okay.
Motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further, yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a comment that we, we sat in closed session to interview some extraordinary young people today, and every one of them were very deserving. And I just wanted to salute those young people. It's a shame we couldn't award them all, but I think this board would agree that they were very impressive young people. And these four people are clearly deserving, as were the others, but I thought I should say that. I was, for one, was, was honored to be able to interview them.
We look, and to follow up on what Mr. Shell said, I mean, having people that are from the area come back to the area to teach is really important. You're keeping your talent within your county, and hopefully they'll all come back to teach.
Love to see a business partner step in and maybe pick up one or two of these other deserving students.
Absolutely.
All right.
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Wortman, Mr. Shell said, that I agree wholeheartedly. It's a shame, there were eleven outstanding individuals, and I'm sure there are more out there, but it's certainly a shame that, that we had to cut it at four, but we had to draw a line somewhere, but they were all loving. You're right, we're certainly very outstanding, and I, I think we're make excellent teachers, all of them.
All right, all, have we voted, did we vote on it?
We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion, I thought, they interrupted me. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, correspondence, anybody got any correspondence?
Yes, briefly.
Okay.
I attended a press conference this morning, and I just wanted to compliment Dr. Markley on a job well done. We spoke, they spoke directly, he and the sheriff, and the Pender Superintendent, and the, and District Attorney Ben David spoke directly to the challenges that we have. The sheriff said in very eloquent but firm terms that young people that choose to communicate threats will be held accountable. And that's happening. And Mr. David talked about how the law had recently changed, and it's a felony. And parents and students need to know how very, very serious this is. Many of them may be kidding around, but it's not a kidding matter. And I just wanted to thank all four of those men for being there and speaking directly to our community, and the TV stations and the Star News were there. And so I think the word got out, and just wanted to say job well done.
And just following up on what Mr. Shell said, I think we can continue talking to our students and our teachers about the consequences of, whether it be Facebook posts or whatever it is. But, I mean, ultimately it comes down to, and I know Mr. Higgins will, will agree with me, that ignorance is no defense to the law. I mean, the law, I would venture to say that none of us know all the laws, but there's a reason why they're published. There's punishment for laws, so we just need to make sure that, you know, we continue to educate. But unfortunately, when you make threats, as we've talked about, there are consequences.
Also, I would, I would think that hopefully our schools, every one of them, because some of these have been so ridiculous, some of the things that have been done, I mean, it's just, you just can't understand where that would come from, to post a picture online, for example, holding a semi-automatic weapon, and making a comment, even joking or whatever about a school. Maybe we need to do more, maybe the schools need to, you know, I don't know what else you can do, but it's, it's ridiculous that someone would do that, and I don't know where their mind is.
We continue to talk, you know, I mean, that, that's really all there is, continue to educate.
But I'm hoping our schools let them know, that, look, you might think it's joking, but if you put your picture online with a weapon and make a comment about a school.
And that's what Ms. Charm did, right? Isn't that what she started with in some of the middle schools? So, I mean, it, it really is, it's really telling these kids, and then saying, hey, you know, you think it's joking? Well, look, look at the seven people that have been charged, some of them with felonies. You're sixteen years old, and you're charged with a felony, it's, it's going to stick with you for a while.
Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing none, announcements. We have the legislative luncheon on Thursday, March eighth, at eleven thirty, here in the BOE Center. I don't know who else responded.
Actually, this will be the largest one we've had so far.
Good.
It's only one elected official who will be unable to attend.
Okay, good. Budget development meeting on Wednesday, March the fourteenth, starting at noon here in the BOE, that's for everybody. Superintendent's advisory, student advisory meeting will be held on Friday, March the sixteenth, at eight fifteen in the morning here in the BOE Center. There will be another budget development meeting on Wednesday, March the twenty-first, at four o'clock in the BOE Center. And our next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will be on Tuesday, April the third, at five thirty in the BOE Center. All right, now, we need to have a closed session.
Can I make one, one more announcement?
Okay, go ahead.
Real quick, Dr. Smith, kindergarten registration started Thursday, right? Three, one?
Yes, you are correct.
And he knows that why?
Because he's got a kindergarten.
My wife's registering tomorrow.
All right.
I'm now going to close session pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot one one.
That's eleven.
Parenthesis, oh, whatever, parenthesis A, parenthesis one, parenthesis three, and one fifteen C dash four oh two.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Can we please take a break before?